...for January 18, 2012. If you would, please join me in the -- oh, excuse me. I'm convening. Are we supposed to have a rule call first?
Commissioner Mom?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Roth?
Here.
Mayor Neely.
And with that, if you would -- here. Would you please join me in place?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
All right.
The first thing is, we're going to have a presentation from our Main Street Downtown Manager, Lloyd Purdy.
Good volume? Right here? Okay. Thank you.
We can hear you there.
We can hear you.
Thank you for inviting us out. I didn't see so many people showed up for a presentation about downtown.
I know. I loved it.
I'm Lloyd Purdy. I'm the Director of the Downtown Program. I have asked the brains and the beauty of our operation, my Board President, for the second year now, Terry Powers, to join me up here. We are going to take a very few minutes and give our annual report to the City Commission about what's happening in our downtown. This will give you a summary of some of the successes from last year, as well as we'll end with a look into what we hope to accomplish in 2012. And am I -- is there a right to move forward? Yeah? Okay. A lot of our successes centered on Oregon City's downtown deal in partnership building. We're at our best when we're developing partnerships, and that's a theme that's going to roll throughout these dozen or so slides. And I'm showing on this slide the successes that result when we have partnerships. This month, we added our 38th new business since we started counting in 2009. That's balanced out against about 15, 16 business closures. Still a really great ratio of new business starts to business closures. We're seeing, on average, a million dollars a year in private sector funding going into downtown buildings and downtown properties. A lot of that is encouraged by things like City Urban Renewal Commission grants, but certainly kudos to the private entrepreneurs that are making our downtown a better place for business. Certainly, speaking of the public sector, last year was the year we got to start spending $2.5 million for infrastructure improvements. This was done in partnership with Nancy Crushhour and Public Works and ODOT, and even some federal funding to help make our downtown a better place to visit. This is how we got a two-way Main Street funded, and how we will continue in 2012 on the second phase of a streetscape enhancement program. Other fun numbers and things I'm excited about, and you all were there in November when we unveiled Moontrap, a piece of public art, a very major piece of public art for downtown. Since then, we've also funded a second piece of public art that we'll hope to unveil later this year, actually in the summer. So, some exciting numbers to see happening in and around downtown. Now, why? Why put any effort into an old downtown, you know, beyond the fact that there's 166 years of our history there? Well, we act as a regional center. For 400,000 potential visitors, you all might think of them as residents. Within the 10-minute drive area, there are almost a half-million-dollar people. We're well-positioned to serve that regional draw. We have over 180 businesses in about 175 buildings. Every day, about 1,000 people show up to work downtown, you know, between the courthouse, the legal offices, the restaurants, the retailers. We know that 8,000 visitors a week come through downtown on a Tri-Met bus. The courthouse brings 5,000 visitors downtown every week, not all of them in chains. Okay? A little bit of humor there? Thanks.
(laughing).
Thank you. And we know, of course, average ridership on the elevator is in excess of 12,000 people a month. Our elevator is an active gateway between our uptown and our downtown, or Oregon City and its waterfront downtown.
Do you count dogs? Do you ever count dogs?
I have --
There's a lot of dogs in here.
We haven't counted dogs. We might need to ask the elevator operator to count pets, too.
(laughing).
And that -- these numbers are all numbers that I was sharing throughout 2011. So, we continue to update these numbers, and as Doug pointed out in meetings, the ridership numbers have probably gone up since these numbers. Other important statistics about downtown: When the Arch Bridge reopens in the fall, on or about October, we'll see another 14,000 cars come back into downtown, and they'll get to enjoy our two-way Main Street, something that will be new to a lot of people who haven't entered downtown from that direction. Speaking of driving, 99E McLaughlin Boulevard carries about 40,000 drivers, a lot of people, through our city and through our downtown daily. So, that's just a little statistical list of the important facts and figures relevant to downtown. More facts and figures. This changes. Again, this was back in January 2010. I need to update it, but it gives us a feel for what's happening downtown. We work under an idea that our downtown is best when it's multi-use, when we have civic activities like the courthouse and municipal and public sector activities, where we have retailers, where we have restaurateurs, where we have professional offices and service providers. Service providers here is an overly large section of our downtown, and that's things like hair salons, mechanics, anybody who's not in the restaurant retail but still needs that Main Street, that retail-level frontage, is in a service provider, distinct from a professional office. Is this the perfect mix? No. We want to see more restaurant and retail activity downtown. Nowhere in here is there a pie in this chart for housing, and that's something we need to work on. We need to see a return to a residential neighborhood component for our downtown. The Downtown Development and Redevelopment Group, it's called Main Street Oregon City, and it does have a vision for more residential downtown, more business downtown, more activity downtown. This is two or three sentences, and I can summarize it by reading off the bold points to you. We work to see a vibrant mix of unique businesses, activities, restaurants, and housing in our downtown. We look -- we work to see downtown as the heart and soul of Oregon City, and maybe even, as some have put it, the I-5 -- is it 205?
205.
I-5, I-205 corridor. We should be the family room for everything south of Portland. Well, why not aspire to be that? That's a worthwhile goal. So, how do we get there? Through the Main Street Program, we have a partner with the city, a partner with other agencies, a partner with the state, led by volunteers through a Board of Directors that represent a cross-section of our community. Business owners are on this board, property owners are on this board, representatives from the arts community, representatives from area residents, representatives from City Hall. This group is a cross-section of downtown because it takes, you know, what was the saying? It takes a village to raise a child, and it takes a whole city to revitalize a downtown. We do that through four approaches, and it's worth me spending a minute to remind the Commission here and the visitors even in the room that we follow a National Trust model, a four-point approach for downtown revitalization. We build consensus. We build partnerships. Part of my goal is to make sure those that need a voice downtown find their voice, and that we have the capacity to do the things we want to do. We promote and we market. We see the special events we do. We see the publicity we get in the newspaper. We celebrate successes when we find them. We do design and preserve. We work with property owners to improve their buildings. We work with City Hall to find funding for streetscape improvements. We want downtown to be safe, pedestrian-oriented, because it's people that buy things, not cars. And we want downtown to be a great place to live. We also do some level of economic development. For us, that means focusing on growing our existing businesses, like places like Funnelbox, the eighth fastest-growing company in the Portland market, all the way down to Rightberry's Cupcakes, that we're helping, you know, grow their marketplace. We also work heavily to recruit new businesses and new entrepreneurs. All this is done when we have space downtown that is tenable and ready for a business owner to move into, and that's the challenge we're increasingly focusing on this year, is making sure our retail and second and third stories are tenable. And right now, we have a challenge there, but I'll circle back to that at the end. Dollars for downtown. We help bring dollars and funding into Oregon City, and we've been pretty successful at applying that into downtown programs and projects. Last year, $42,000 was invested downtown for energy improvements. Over the last two and a half years, we've seen $120,000 invested in sign improvements, new signs, with some state money, some city money, and a lot of private sector money. We've seen about $40,000 go towards downtown events and programs that become the parties that our residents get to celebrate in a fun, unique setting. We always are pleased when the Urban Renewal Commission budgets money for new projects like building improvements on facades or adaptive reuse. I'm going to get into a longer list, but move through it fairly quickly, because we very happily worked with the city, and in particular Nancy Crushhour, to find funding for streetscape improvements, two-way Main Streets. We've worked with Metro to explore how to redevelop sites downtown. More and more public art money. An urban petroglyph project that's coming online this year, along with our sidewalk project, so that visitors around downtown don't have to ask me where to go to find the courthouse. They can look on the sidewalk and see an arrow that says courthouse this way, elevator this way, Irma Tinger House up the hill. Directional finding. We're calling that urban petroglyphs.
Nice.
So, this is the exciting number. All those numbers add up to more than $2.7 million that we've helped bring in to Oregon City. A lot of it's gone to make downtown a better place, because that downtown's 166 years old and it's needed that support. A lot of it's gone to public art and programming and special events that our city and our residents didn't celebrate. I said we do this in partnership. I've got a couple slides to remind everybody that we're about and at our best when we're building partnerships. There's a partnership where we did a little damage, and then we fixed everything.
(laughing).
Streetscape enhancements. The first city celebration has been a partnership with the Arts Guild, the Three Rivers Arts Guild, and the Rotary Club. Car Club to downtown. Both these events on their -- starting their third year, a partnership with the Trick and Racy Car Club. I need to replace this picture. In fact, Commissioners saw a picture, and I'll probably use that one, of new artwork where a worn-out old sign used to be. That was done in partnership with the Clackamas County Arts Alliance, with the Rotary Club, with funding from Metro Enhancement Grant. As I mentioned, a couple years ago, and this came up in your last meeting, we did work with Metro to explore concepts for how new build might work downtown, and we're now in good position for your Economic Development Manager to move forward with private partners on these two sites in downtown. I don't think any of you have seen this. This is just a concept. Does it tell where? You can't quite tell where it is.
Uh-uh.
I'll tell you, though. We funded, with Metro, two adaptive reuse studies. We sat down with the Masonic Lodge and said, "What happens if something else happened here in the lodge? How could you generate more value and income and revenue from your property?" We also did that with the Bush family, on the Bush Building. This is Railroad Avenue, looking at the warehouse side of the Bush family building. Yes, it could be lofts in our downtown. Residential can fit in our downtown. So, we have a full case study on that, both visually and a financial analysis. Now, we're not just about building partnerships. It's not just about finding other great organizations and entities to provide funding or do work. We do plenty of work on our own. We, last year, did, I think, four downtown walkabouts. I know my Board President ruined a pair of heels, and our mayor maybe ruined a pair of heels, or at least --
(laughing).
You replaced one of them.
We did get to award Doug the Golden Shoe Award for taking a two-hour tour with us and some developers and some civic leaders from around the area on downtown to tell everybody what's happening downtown. We are working on business recruitment through our Blue Collar Creative Campaign. We are working on our second public art project for downtown. I mentioned the urban petroglyphs. We've been working to find ways to do adaptive reuse. Those case studies were a first step. Urban Renewal Commission funding that's been budgeted is the next step. The downtown sign fund is now complete. We've spent all the money we started out with several years ago for signage. You got an email from me this afternoon, because we had some good ink about our newest business owner downtown, Mike Gavazza, he took over for Anna Handegard at AJH Financial. And of course, a week ago, we had our other newest business, Strikers Arcade, opened up. We do a Welcome Downtown program, which is kind of like what we do for you all here, but anytime we have a stakeholder group or a certain part of downtown's constituency that we need to speak to, lawyers, financial agents, real estate agents, new business owners, we guide them through a Welcome Downtown program. And of course, we do a little bit of grant writing on the side. So, this is the last slide, and this is how we wrap up this presentation. Maybe we'll hand this out, too. The city has a couple extra of these, but these are for you all. These is our end-of-year report. It includes much of this information. You have one, I see, right?
Mm-hmm.
Rocky? Okay. So, you all have this?
I don't have one.
If not, I'll get it to you.
Okay.
The important part of all this document is the goal-setting. Using the advice of three years' worth of conversations with consultants, professionals, residents, input actually from you all, if not formally in a forum, listening to what we're hearing about needs to happen downtown, this is the goal for the next 12 to 16 months for downtown Oregon City, and it's ambitious, and it's only going to happen if we continue to build those partnerships. We want to see one building restored and rehabbed. It's going to be hard to find space for new tenants until we have a higher quality of property downtown, and we certainly won't be able to add residential until we rehab some of our old buildings. We've got two city-owned sites that are -- one of them is very well-positioned to be a new-build project, so we're happy to partner with the city on finding a private-sector developer to make that second goal happen. We need to see downtown restored to some level of residential activity. That drives our restaurants, our retailers, our day-in-and-day-out activity. With that in mind, we're setting a goal of two new restaurants downtown, two new retail businesses, two new office tenants, and some of that will be contingent upon building restoration and new building. And then also, the final two points. We've made it a point for downtown, based somewhat on the success of our public art project Moontrap, to get a little more aggressive and say, "Let's make sure now we take care of that municipal elevator." The nation shares the falls, Lamont Falls, with us, Oregon City. That's a national icon. The West Lynn Bridge that's being restored by ODOT for $13 million. Oh, my gosh, that's the first time I've said that.
Oh, my!
The Oregon City Arch Bridge.
Oh, my gosh.
That's the first time in three years I've said that that way.
We're going to throw you under the bus.
The Oregon City Arch Bridge.
There you go. See if you ruin me.
All that hard work.
Gone.
Oh, my gosh. Terry, I feel bad for you there.
What I should have said was, "The Oregon City Arch Bridge we share with West Lynn as an icon."
There you go.
Oregon City's municipal elevator is ours. And when I say "ours," I mean it's our city's. We need to own it. We need to take the next step in improving it. I'm working on something right now. You'll hear about it soon, but I want to get a full concept out to you all on ways to do that. So, that's a big goal. Some of these will very much need city support. The last one, activating the streetscape. That's up to our property owners to make their facades friendly to the pedestrian. That's up to our business owners and us to help them activate their storefronts. That's up to us to program the events that bring out visitors that activate our streetscapes. So, a lot of partners help make that last one happen. But this is what I feel is an ambitious goal. It was set with a lot of contemplation by the Board of Directors, and every time I tell my Board President, Terry Powers, it's too ambitious, she just smiles and says, "Go get it done, Lloyd." So, I say, "As long as I've got great partners, we'll keep getting these things done." I talked your ear off, as usual. It's been a long time since I've been here, but I figured this was a couple minutes, and it's probably well worth everyone's time.
This is great. Great stuff. Thank you. Thank you very much, you guys, for doing that.
Terry, were you going to say something, or are you just leaving it all here?
Well, we have a good working relationship. He does what he does best, and I do what I do best. Lloyd, go get it done.
I have a couple of comments. When you mentioned that we've lost businesses, not all those businesses were lost as businesses. Some downscaled, some actually upscaled and had to move elsewhere because they didn't have enough room. So, when you see a building's closed up, it does not mean that the business has gone bankrupt. Oftentimes, they've moved elsewhere. The other thing I wanted to mention was that in fairly recent time, not too long ago, we were getting elevator ridership comparisons based on current and a 20-year average. I've asked to have them broken down on a yearly basis. The last three years of the elevator use, which corresponds, I think, to the Main Street Program, has gone up dramatically, year by year.
Yeah.
And I'm sure it's due to, well, new businesses down there, to the events that you're having and so forth, and it's been very, very positive. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do we have -- I'll just direct the city manager to direct somebody else. We've got a lot of people standing. Are there any chairs that we can pull forward in the lobby or anything?
No, Nancy? Do we have any chairs?
There are chairs out there in the lobby, if they'd like to. And the video is on out there as well.
So, they can sit on some chairs that are back around the corner, I think, and there's a video. You can watch it if you are tired of standing. With that, we have a time now for citizen comments. I'm getting -- and these are citizen comments for items that are not on the agenda. I think most of you are probably here for an item that's on the agenda, but for items that are not on the agenda, if you have comments, you can come up for three minutes. We're really going to have to start enforcing those three minutes. And we have a listing of people that wish to speak. I have Joyce Gifford and Kevin Hunt to come forward, and if others want to come forward, sign up with our city recorder, Nancy I. Joyce, you're first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Joyce Gifford, a resident here of Oregon City. On January 2, I took the train to Olympia, Washington, to visit my family, and as you know, it was -- the train leaves Oregon City early in the morning. It was cold, it was dark, and the train was 20 minutes late. So, we had lots of time to stand outside of this closed building that the city owns, that is our train depot, and look at the very old signs behind poster, behind the plexiglass that's hard to read because the water's gotten through, and there's a trolley schedule from, what, 2006? Okay? Okay. That was leaving Oregon City. I arrived up in Olympia, met my family members, a very vibrant station going on, and I didn't really pay much attention at that time what the Olympia train station was like, because my brother was there to greet me, and then we went and watched the Ducks win the Rose Bowl game, and that was a lot of fun.
Nice.
Leaving Olympia on a Friday night, it was 6:30. It was cold, it was dark, it was raining. My father took me down to the Olympia train station, and the train was 20 minutes late. But the station was open. It was staffed by volunteers. It's a warm, inviting place. They had coffee on that you could put your money in the jar. They had vending machines. They had monitors where you could see how late the train was going to be, when we could expect it to come. The station is staffed solely by volunteers. The city of Olympia, well, the volunteer group up in Olympia, built the station all through nonprofits, and in their little brochure, they have a statement, "No one arrives by Amtrak to Olympia to a closed station. Even if the trains are late after 11:30 at night, volunteers are there." Oregon City, I got home, it was a quarter to 10 on a Friday night. It's dark. Now, we do have lovely lights in our parking lot at our train depot, but again, we're closed. And as you think about the face of Oregon City, the visitors that come to Oregon City, what are they going to see? What's the first thing that they see? I want the city to consider as one of the goals is to put together a volunteer organization, because Oregon City only has four trains a day. Olympia has 10. Four trains a day, leaving at 7:24 in the morning, and at 10:54 in the morning, 6:36 in the evening, and 9:34 in the evening, four times a day, to meet and greet those who come by Amtrak. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hur.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Just a very brief comment. It relates back to the work session, the most recent work session that was held, and it was discussed forming a committee, and I believe you actually formed a committee to look at some revisions to the city charter. And as I understand, they are mostly housekeeping amendments, but, you know, changing masculine form to feminine form, or, you know, whatever, that kind of thing. And there were also some provisions that were clearly out of date and that perhaps were contradicted by parts of the city code. I was able, in about an hour and a half today, to go through the city code and the city charter and find all of those things myself. I'm not sure you really need a four-person committee to do it, but what I'd like to suggest that you do is you appoint some citizens to this process. The charter is the closest thing to the people, and one thing I noticed when I read the charter that kind of jumped out at me was it said that all the power derives from the commission. And the commission's representative of the people, but, you know, if you read the Constitution of the state of Oregon, what does it say? Says that all power derives from the people. Derives from the people. And so, here we have a process that's still kind of commission-centric, where a couple people from the commission and a couple staff members will go through and suggest changes to the charter. I'd like you just to consider maybe actually having a citizen review process. It might be a positive thing to do. I was fortunate enough to grow up in Montana, and in 1972, the people of Montana rewrote their state constitution, and they did it entirely with a state constitutional convention. I'm not suggesting you go to these great extremes, but it was kind of interesting because they had statewide elections, and they had delegates, and I came from Missoula. Missoula happened to have seven men, seven women, seven Democrats, seven Republicans, seven liberals, and seven conservatives, and they all sat on the Bill of Rights Committee. And as a result, the Montana Constitution, in my opinion, has the most elegant Bill of Rights in the world, and it's a beautiful constitution. I think that the people of Oregon City, in conjunction with some of you elected folks and staffers, could produce a modern, up-to-date charter and identify some things that maybe could make the city run a little smoother and maybe make it a little more people-centric. Just a thought, something you might want to consider. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, were any things, adoption, any things to be changed on the agenda, anything to be pulled on the consent agenda?
Hold on.
Uh-uh.
No.
Hearing none. Going into public hearings, this is the appeal. It's AP 1101, Appeal of Nonconforming Determination of a property that's located within a residential zoning designation in Clackamas County. A nonconforming use applicant was submitted to the Oregon City Planning Commission to confirm that the property near the intersection of Front Avenue and Foreside is legally We have this, then, on appeal from a staff decision, and I guess I'll let -- I guess I'll let you speak to it. Would you introduce yourself, since you're here?
Laura Turway, planner with the city of Oregon City. And before we start, I think Ed Sullivan, our city attorney, has some legal information to read.
Right.
This is an appeal of a land use decision. A staff report's been prepared and made available to the public seven days before the hearing. The staff report identifies approval criteria that applies to each of the proposals. The staff has analyzed the criteria along with the appeal document, written documents, and input received by the public notification process. This is a quasi-judicial proceeding. That means it looks more like a trial. You're going to have to be deciding both facts and policy. And the procedure for that is set forth both in state law and in the city's code and its rules of procedure. And to my far right, there is the synopsis of the procedure to be followed tonight. As an appeal hearing, individuals will be allowed to testify, and they are those who submitted written testimony during the staff's review of the proceeding below. Anyone who did submit written testimony who wishes to speak should fill out a speaker's card and give it to the planning staff or the city recorder before they speak. Speakers will proceed in the order in which their card is received. For the public record, we ask participants to begin their testimony with their name and whether they reside or have a business in Oregon City. Testimony and evidence should be directed towards the applicable approval criteria, and there are three that have been identified, all part of Chapter 17.58 of the city code, which relates to nonconforming uses. If anybody wants to hear them in particular, I'd be thrilled to read them. If anyone believes that -- If anyone believes that other criteria apply, then that person must identify and discuss those criteria and explain why he or she believes it to be applicable. A person may submit any written testimony while the public record is open. This is the first hearing on this matter, and any person has a right to a seven-day continuance of the proceeding, either to leave the record open or to go to a new hearing. And they must ask for it. The applicant has already requested that, and you have a letter to that effect in the Written materials submitted during the public hearing process must be presented to the staff in order to become part of the record. This includes PowerPoint presentations, oversized poster boards, reports, pictures, and other exhibits used in any oral testimony. Any person wishing a continuance has to ask for it, it's already been done. If the commission makes a decision with which a person disagrees, any issue that you may wish to appeal must have been raised for the city commission's consideration. Without raising the issue on the record with sufficient specificity, and accompanied by statements or evidence that the city and all parties can respond to, the issue will not be appealable to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals. In addition, I'm required to state that as far as the applicant goes, state law requires under ORS 197-796, that we announce the failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues related to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue will preclude an action for damages in circuit court. We will now open the record for Oregon City File Number LN 11-05, or AP, that's Appeal 1101, a request for recognition of a nonconforming use. Let me ask the commission if it's had any ex-party contacts or conflicts of interest, bias, or other statement to declare.
I had a phone call about a week ago from a citizen who I believe is a friend or an acquaintance of Mr. Erickson, who, a citizen of Oregon City, that called and was asking me what was going on with this particular item. I hadn't heard of it. I basically, so there was no conversation in detail of what it was, because I wasn't sure. Basically stated that I assumed it was with the planning department, or excuse me, with the planning commission, and that I would look into it, and next thing you know, we have the packet and it's there. So, that's it.
Same thing. I had a phone call from a citizen saying the same thing.
Does anybody want to ask either of the commissioners about the contacts that we have received? Hearing none, we're ready to proceed.
I have a request. I've never seen you thrilled. Would you please read out the criteria? How long is it going to take?
It'll take three minutes.
Okay.
Well, Ed looks that up. Your procedures for public appeals are staff reports provided, which we'll provide tonight during public testimony. You allow 10 minutes for the appellate, five minutes for representatives of neighborhood associations, three minutes for individuals, five minutes for the applicant's rebuttal, and then obviously you can ask questions on that time, and you certainly have discretion to extend that time, should the commission so decide to do so. Mrs. Turway will be presenting the staff report tonight, and I would propose that we get through the staff report, feel free to ask any questions as we're going along, anytime during this process. When we get to the end, we will then come back and revisit the request for the additional time, and at that point, we'll set dates and whatnot for that request.
And we're, the appellate is referred to as the applicant.
They're the same, they're the same thing.
So when people are looking at the public hearing procedure, let's see, the appellate that has made the application.
Correct.
Here are the three items that are, first of all, it's the Purpose and Policy, 1758-010. Nonconforming situations are created when the application of zoning district to a site changes, or the zoning regulations change. As part of the change, existing uses, density, or development might no longer be allowed or further restricted. Nonconforming uses, structures, and lots are those uses, structures, and lots that were lawfully established but do not conform to the provisions of this title or the provisions of the zoning district in which the use structure or lot is located. The intent of these provisions is not to force all nonconforming situations immediately to be brought into conformance. Instead, the intent is to guide nonconforming situations in a new direction consistent with city policy, and eventually bring them into conformance. The second one is 1758-030, lawful nonconforming use. A use that was lawfully established on a particular development site but no longer complies with allowed uses or the standards for those uses in this title may be considered a lawful nonconforming use. Change of ownership, tenancy, or management of a lawfully established nonconforming use shall not affect its lawful nonconforming status. The continuation of a nonconforming use is subject to the following. A, discontinuance. If a lawful nonconforming use is discontinued for a period of one year, it shall lose its lawful nonconforming status, and the use of the property thereafter shall conform with the existing provisions of this title. If a nonconforming use ceases operations, even if the structure or materials related to the use remain, the use shall be deemed to have been discontinued. B, conformance. If a lawful nonconforming use is converted to a conforming use, no nonconforming use may be resumed. C, destruction of a nonresidential use. When a structure containing a lawful nonconforming, nonresidential use is damaged by fire or other causes, the reestablishment of the nonconforming use shall be prohibited if the repair costs of the structure is more than 60% of the assessed value. The next one relates to a residential use, it's not relevant. E, intentional destruction. I don't think it's an issue here, nobody's raised it as an issue. And then F, expansion. No lawful nonconforming use may be replaced by a different type of nonconforming use, nor may any legal nonconforming use be expanded or intensified. And then the last one is 1758-060. Process to conform the legality of a nonconforming use lot or structure. Any person may request a Type 1 or Type 2 review to confirm the legality of a nonconforming use lot or structure. In order to confirm the nonconforming use lot or structure is legal, sufficient evidence shall be submitted to the city determining the following. A, the nonconforming use or structure was established lawfully, and B, the nonconforming use or structure has not become more nonconforming within the past 20 years of the date of application. The applicant shall provide sufficient evidence to allow the community development director to review and confirm the legality of a nonconforming use lot or structure. An applicant may request a Type 1 procedure provided the applicant can provide sufficient evidence to confirm 17.58.060A and B without discretion. If the applicant cannot provide sufficient evidence to determine 17.58.060A and B without discretion, the applicant may apply for a Type 2 procedure. Application for a Type 2 procedure shall be noticed to the public in a public comment period to gather additional information. If the applicant cannot show that the nonconforming use lot or structure was lawfully established, or has not been expanded pursuant to 17.58.060A and B above, the use lot or structure shall be determined to be illegal.
And this is a Type 2?
This is a Type 2, so you have the higher level of hearing.
Yes.
I've submitted a memo to you, it's in the record, and staff and I will be glad to help as we go.
Could you introduce yourself, even though you're on staff?
Laura Turway, city of Oregon City Planner. I worked on the staff report for this application. Planning File LN 1105 was submitted by the applicant in order to confirm the legality of the use for properties located near the corner of Front and Foresite, shown on the map. There's three specific tax lots shown on the map. The property is currently within the R10 zoning designation, which allows single-family homes as a primary use. The site is currently utilized by Bill Erickson Heavy Construction for outdoor storage of equipment, rock, and field dirt, and material processing. Planning reviewed this application as a Type 2 review, and found approval with conditions. So the site is currently utilized for outdoor storage and for material processing. Planning found that the applicant submitted sufficient documentation to demonstrate compliance with the Oregon City Municipal Code for outdoor storage in that area highlighted on the map, only in that black area. Planning found that the applicant did not submit sufficient evidence to demonstrate compliance with the Oregon City Municipal Code for outdoor storage outside of those boundaries, or for material processing on any of the three lots. So just to keep in mind when we go through this presentation, we have a staff report with a decision. You can either concur with our decision, alter the conditions of approval, or deny the application. So the onus is on the applicant to bear the burden of proof, to show conformance with our municipal code in these nonconforming use determinations. So that's an important part of this, and how we came to our conclusion. Some of the criteria that Mr. Sullivan already read off, which I want to highlight again, is that the applicant has to bear the burden of proof to show that the use was established lawfully, both outdoor storage use and the processing of materials, that it's been continuous over time, hasn't expanded, been discontinued, intensified, things like that. So in order to review this application, the applicant submitted an application form, a series with a plethora of letters in them, a couple grading permits, and some aerial photos. As we stated earlier, this was a Type 2 application. We actually had two public comment periods. During those public comment periods, staff received additional letters and pictures. You can see some of the pictures on the screen as well. So this is the body of evidence that we used to make our determination. Aerial photos were an important part of this. Here's all the aerial photos, we're just going to flip through from all the years. This is 1994, the earliest of the aerial photos. You can see a general outline of the subject site, and there appear to be heavy vegetation on the north and the eastern side of the lots. Here's 2000, similar. 2001, 2002, you can see again, heavy vegetation. You'll notice from 2003 to 2004, the removal of some vegetation on the northern part on Tax Lot 201. And throughout these years, you can sometimes see some maybe material processing or some heavy machinery throughout the site. 2010 is our newest aerial photo. Compared to 2000, you can see some differences there. The applicant submitted this appeal because they did not agree with staff findings relating to outdoor storage, specifically they identified Tax Lot 201, which is that northern lot, and the recognition of material processing on all three lots. So we'll go through each of those two items specifically. So the first one, I'm just going to talk about outdoor storage outside of that boundary, not necessarily on 201. Since the onus is on the applicant to provide sufficient documentation to prove compliance with the code, I wanted to provide you with what evidence we used to make our determination. We knew that the county and the city did not allow outdoor storage from 1967 to today. We know that Tax Lot 201, which is that northern one, may have at one point been used by the Clackamas County as a borrow site from 1972 to 1977. Tax Lot 13, which is the middle tax lot, at one point may have been used by Park Place Water District from 1935 to 1977. But with those two events, the geographic location of the outdoor storage and the consistency of the outdoor storage over time is not real known, or since then as well. We have aerial photos. You saw a thick tree canopy of vegetation on the northern boundary. We know after 2004, that vegetation appears to have been removed and the land cleared with visible storage activities. We also have some pictures. In those pictures, it appears as though there's recent excavation into the hillside. And then again, the letters. We have lots of letters, and a lot of them conflict with each other. Some stating that Tax Lot 201 had outdoor storage, some stating that it didn't, or some stating that the outdoor storage was grown over time. So from that, we came up with some findings. One is it's not really feasible to believe one statement over another. So the letters themselves don't really provide compelling evidence. We want to look at that supplemental information that's in the record. We also don't know for the area outside of the boundary, how it was actively used at the same intensity. Was that thick canopy covering some outdoor storage? Was the canopy there the whole time? Was it not there? We're a little unclear. And so since we're unclear, we can't make that determination. So we did conclude that the applicant did not bear the burden of proof to demonstrate that outdoor storage was legally established on all three lots, or that it had continued for the past 20 years. Thus, the expansion outside the original area from that earlier photos was determined to be an expansion of a nonconforming use, which we know is not allowed. Second one is material processing. The information that we used for that was that we know, again, from 1967 till today, it wasn't allowed in the county or the city. We have lots of letters, some stating that with the Park Place Water District, there was some material processing, others stating that there was no material processing, or maybe infrequent. And then we also have aerial photos, some of which have some equipment on site that may or may not be processing utilities, or material, sorry. From that, we have city findings. Again, it's not really reasonable or feasible to believe one statement over the other, so that the statements themselves are not compelling evidence. Two is that we have the aerial photos, they're not real consistent with the material processing throughout the years. We also don't know what type of material processing was on each lot, and that it was actually legal when it started on each lot. There's not a lot of history there. So the city concluded that the applicant did not bear the burden of proof to conclude that the processing of materials on site was legally established, and had continued for the past 20 years. Thus, by adding processing to that, it was an intensification of the use which is not allowed in our nonconforming zoning designation. So these are our conditions of approval that we came out with. There's two of them. The first one talks about limiting outdoor storage to the area identified on the map. There are subsequent dates associated with that. Want to make sure that when we limit the outdoor storage, the applicant provides permanent demarcations where that outdoor storage is, so we don't keep expanding and going through this every year. And then there's also a date to get rid of other outdoor storage outside of the area identified, and then to put in those demarcations. The second condition of approval is just a general condition of approval stating the applicant shall cease all processing of materials. So here are your options again. We have our staff report, and you can either concur, you can alter your conditions of approval, or deny the application. Are there any questions I can answer?
Not right now.
Just because it's on the previous slide, my understanding is you, there was evidence that the, I think it was what you stated, but it was all, something else was on the slide. The water, was it called the Water Bureau at the time?
The Park Place Water District?
Park Place Water District. At that time, you mentioned that there was some evidence of material processing, that their use stopped in 1977, is that right?
That's correct.
And so you subsequently didn't see that evidence?
No, and we did have letters, there were letters from people associated with the Park Place Water District, but it wasn't really clear on exactly what the processing of materials was, what they were really doing on site, and what the physical location of that. So did they only process materials on half the site, now they're doing the whole thing? It was really unclear, and that unclarity led to not allowing it.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions of staff? Okay. Then I don't, when they're asking for correspondence, correspondence is not already on the record, but can it be introduced?
Anything that's in the record, or that you've received since, you should receive now and note it, and then go to the-
So if there is any correspondence that people have, they should submit it at this time?
That's correct. Or at the time they testify.
Or the time you testify. Now, I guess we have a specific order in terms of testimony, and do we have it marked whether they're supporting the applicant? Well, we're going to have the applicant coming first, but whether they support the applicant, does that order have to be specifically followed?
It's a good idea to have all the proponents and then the opponents.
Okay, so the list we're, the list we're already getting is in terms of people who want to testify are not necessarily in that order, I take it.
It's the order in which they turn in the forms.
So we'll try to straighten that out later. But would the applicant please come forward?
Oh, yeah. Oh, I'll get it.
My name is Seth King. I'm a land use attorney with the law firm of Perkins Coie, which is at 1120 Northwest Cooch Street, 10th floor in Portland, here tonight on behalf of the applicant appellant who operates the uses on the property. And our request to you tonight is that you modify the staff determination and find that it is a lawful, nonconforming use to continue the outdoor storage and processing that is occurring on all three tax lots. And I'm just going to be here to kick things off and turn it over to the rest of the team. We've got Bruce Goldson is going to make our primary presentation. He's with Theta LLC, is our project engineer. And then we're also going to be hearing from Bill and Grant Erickson, who are with Bill Erickson Heavy Construction, Inc., which is, of course, the use that operates on the site. And again, we'll be explaining to you and meeting our burden of proof that, in fact, the uses were lawfully established, that they've continued, and in an uninterrupted fashion, and that they have not become more nonconforming by, you know, for example, expanding or becoming more intense. So, we're happy to answer your questions tonight. And then I will note, as Mr. Sullivan indicated, we've submitted a letter into the record, which I believe you have, if not, I've got extra copies, in which we've requested that you hold the record open to allow us to answer some of the questions that staff and the city attorney have raised, and that may be raised tonight. We've set out a schedule in that letter, and we can talk about that. So, thank you.
For the record, my name is Bruce Goldson. I'm Theta LLC at P.O. Box 1345, like us we go. Mr. Mayor and members of the commission, I want to introduce Bill here in a moment, who's the owner, but first I want to digress a little bit and say, you know, the purpose of this appeal is to expand the nonconform use into Tax Lot 201, which is the northerly tax lot, and to allow processing, material processing on any one of the three lots. Oh, okay. Thank you. Tax lot, none of these tax lots have ever had an address or ever had a building on them, so this nonconforming use is a little different than when we have a building or a structure. This is just a site. And so, there's never been an address. Clackamas County owned, there's documentation in the record that Clackamas County owned this northerly piece at one time, and then Mr. Erickson, Bill Erickson Heavy Construction, purchased that. It was used for storage of equipment and removal and deposit of materials over time when he purchased the property. There's lots of sworn affidavits in the file, which we believe have a higher sworn, then sworn, there are sworn testimonies, and they have a higher believability than ones that are just in letters from neighbors that may not be sworn. So, we feel that those affidavits, because of the nature of this business, are the important criteria to judge whether the business has operated continuously and has processed the material over time. It's not, this is a, it's not a continuous use operation. It's more seasonal, and there's no employees that come there daily throughout the year. And so, equipment could be there for days, weeks, or months. Material is stored there, processed there, and also can be over a short period of time. So, it could be that it's just there for a short period of time, and then goes away. We believe that the photos, because they're only a snapshot of time, one day for the entire year, and we don't have any records of continuous photographs of the site, that's certainly not available to us, we've not seen any, that those, that activities can go on there on a yearly basis that wouldn't have any record in a one-shot photo for the So, I think that those reasons, for those reasons, again, testimony is important, and I believe here tonight we will hear from individuals that support our application and our appeal here, that will demonstrate that those activities did go on and did meet the burden of proof that we're trying to achieve. Let's see if we can get this to work. Some of the photos, you can't tell from, because of the high altitude of the photos, what kind of material is actually on the site. As you can see here in a side view, this is a fairly recent picture, the darker material is topsoil. It's been processed by the equipment on site that's mobile, which may or may not be on site at any one time. They take this equipment off-site, they bring it onto site. This is some of their product they've made in the past, last year, I think, and you can see there's grass growing on it. So, when a photo's taken, you can't tell what's underneath that. Here's another photo, taking a little earlier in the year, same area. The second arrow is the same pile, and you see the actual stuff is green there. There's some more greener looking materials down in this area here. So, you can see over time that if you took the photo, depending on the time of year, you may say, huh, that's grass, or that's, we don't know what it is. So, it seems to me that you could find that material has, in fact, been on the site, particularly if we have affidavits and people's testimony, that that's what's occurred. There's various kinds of material that we do, that Bill Erickson does process on the site, and these include topsoil, concrete, asphalt. If you go down here, right now, there is some boulders that are being stored on site. Those may be processed for size on site, just by categorizing by size. Then they'll be hauled off and reused at some other construction site. Oops, let's see. Okay. On this photo here, I just want to show you that, yes, there's, you know, over time, you can see at that particular time, it's been skinned off. One photo of those shows it green, the other shows it skinned off, so you don't know what's going on there at any given time. There looks like there's some boulders down there in the one pile, in the one area, in the other one, they aren't there. That's occurred over many years, and like I say, this is not, this is a seasonal operation. It doesn't occur on a daily operation. They're not manufacturing rock or something like that, which might be a more continuous operation with great big stockpiles. This material just comes in, they use it, process it, they use it, and then equipment is stored there periodically. Some of it is excess equipment that's not being used on a construction site somewhere, and some of it is just used for the site. Right now, earlier this spring, there was some asphalt that was there. It's largely gone. So, for those reasons, we feel that we've met the burden of proof, and there has been some grading permits that issued by the county and the city. Those have gone through planning as a sign-off, or should've, that this is, the operation's gone on. In conclusion, I think that you will find that we've met the burden of proof, and I'd like to have Bill talk a few minutes about how he's used the site. So, Bill.
Thank you. To start out with, I've been in Park Place District since 1945, except for the four years I was gone in the Air Force, but other than that, I've been there forever. And started excavation business, or the excavation business, in 1957, and did all kinds of earthwork all over the country, mostly in the Oregon City, Portland area. We have done all kinds of excavation, pipe work, water utilities, demolition, good-sized demolition jobs. And we also put the final cap on the old landfill. We put in over 3 million yards, and other contractors would have as excess material and bring it in, and a lot of times they'd have some real nice material that was real suitable for real fine topsoil, and we'd bring it up to Sandpit, what we call this place, Sandpit, in the picture there. Anyway, and store that material, and then when the time was right, or the weather was right, and the whole site is paved, well, almost the whole site, 2/3 of it is paved, and then we put the materials on top of that and work on top of that, so that we aren't making a big mud pile to track out in the road, and we have other ways of taking care of the water runoff where we're not.
I think we need to, so we get granted, John.
Well, anyway, I lost track of where I was at there, I'm sorry. We've been doing this for all these years, and that's all I got to say.
Hello, I'm William Grant Erickson, President of Bill Erickson Heavy Construction, and we've been using this property a long time. We, I think of it as recycling, because, I mean, it's not a recycle yard, but yet we're reusing stuff that would irregularly go into the landfill or whatever. We take boulders, asphalt, concrete, dirt, and we'll mix sand and different materials together and make a nice product out of it, try and resell it. We've did it for a long time. I, it's kind of surprising to me, this has come up, since we've been there so long, and everybody's known we've been there. And I don't know if you get a call, and all of a sudden, everything changes, but, you know, we just want to keep working.
So, I think you will hear from people this evening that support our claim, and those people, I believe, will testify that the use has gone on for many, many years, and that there has been a processing on the site. The Water District had owned it, you know, that's been a long time ago now, 1935. There aren't many people around that have accurate memories, or even around, that can demonstrate what was going on there, but I think we do have a few people that might be able to comment to that. So, if you have some questions, I'd be happy to, sure.
I do. This photo that's up here right now, can you locate the tax lot for me that that red dump truck is on?
Yeah, that's basically, you know, that red dump truck is on Tax Lot 201.
201, and the other one is on 13?
That's hard to know. There's no demarcations out there to identify yourself. You would not know where you're at, but that's probably pretty accurate.
But that red one is up on 201.
Sure, for sure.
What section of that is paved? We were stated that a good portion of that is paved.
The driveway is paved in there.
Well, I can see it in the photo, but it's-
Yeah. Let's see if I can go back here.
So, the pavement goes into all-
The 2010, it's kind of hard to show, but it probably, the pavement from that large horizontal arrow there into the 210, from there to the south is, the work area is paved, generally paved.
Was it all paved at the same time?
I could, we could ask-
And how long is the, I mean, when was the pavement done, I guess? Has the pavement been there for?
Would know that.
Well, the pavement is on all three lots. It's not complete on the one, but I think we've paved up there two different times, and we patched it a few times too, but I don't recall how long ago it's been. I know it's been a healthy chunk of time, but I don't know how long. I'd have to go back through the books.
I think one of those issues that made it paved is, was for storm drainage, and there's an area that goes up to the east there, that they worked with the city to control some, over the drainage that was actually coming onto the property, to direct it and better direct it back into a natural drainage way.
I'm more asking because with some sort of idea on the timeline of the pavement, if the pavement's always been there, it's easy to assume that what we were hearing about bringing fill in and leaving it there, and giving it the appearance that it's ground cover from the air, it's just, if it was already the, over the existing concrete or the pavement, then we know that it's just sitting there until it goes out again. So, I think that's an important piece to kind of know. It would help me a little bit too, I think, understand it.
How long ago, you talked about working with the city.
Yes.
How long ago was it?
Well, I know in 2004, there was, there was, I submitted a grading plan in behalf of Bill Erickson at that time, in 2004, and I know that there was some concern also about that time, that some of the concrete blocks there had to be removed because they were deemed to be a fence or too high. But there was also some minor grading that we wanted to accomplish at that time too. And then prior to that-
So, you secured a grading permit at that time?
We did secure a grading permit, yes. And there was an older, in Clackamas County, there was at least one record of an older grading permit, 1986, that showed the contours much the way they are today, and I don't know, and that, I guess, was granted, but they just wanted to do some minor grading there again. But the general shape of the property, there is cut banks there, but they're very old. There's vegetation on them. You can, well, you can see on that one there, you can see some of the vegetation. It's not been disturbed in a long time. In some cases, there's actually trees, I think you'll see here, some of these trees and stuff that's actually growing on the bank, even though it's very steep, the actual, there's been no excavation of the native ground for a long, long time.
Okay. Thank you.
Just one question. I don't know if it's pertinent or not, but are those permits on the record?
Oh, I'm sure they are. Well, I think they're in the record anyway.
Two grade permits are in the documentation.
Okay. Thank you. Any more questions? All right?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask for some patience here. We want to take the applicants in the order of those that are supporting the applicant, those who have general comments, neither supporting or opposing the applicant, and those that are opposing the applicant. Right now, we, are these the only, I have to wait a minute. Are these the only applicants we have, or you just put four in front of us here?
The things that are listed there are those that have signed up.
Okay. What I'm going to do, there's only four, there's only four names.
It goes more, it goes down. There's one.
I'm going to, I'm going to ask for a bit of patience here. I'm going to call out names, and if you can say whether you're pro, neutral, I guess you could say, or opposed, as I go through the list of names. Dennis Snyder?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Erickson, or Ms. Erickson?
Four.
Four, yes. Yeah, just a minute there. I'm just going to, I'm just going to go down there. Okay. And Marcella?
Four.
Okay. Bill Toman?
Four.
Okay. I'm going to have, I'm going to have you, I'm going to take the first two and the next two, and then I'll check subsequently. Dennis Snyder and TJ Erickson, I guess there's already some spoke, but who wants to come forward?
TJ Stewart. There's several Ericksons.
Oh, okay. I've got you down for testimony, right? Yes, and also Dennis Snyder, come forward, please. Okay? And I'll, yeah. Since you're here, you can go ahead, Mr. Erickson. Go ahead and start. Since you're here, you can go ahead, Mr. Erickson, go ahead and start.
I'm here to plead for a yea. I've worked with my father for years and years, and it's very important to us that we get to work together, you know. He's 87. Or, sorry, but he's, anyway, I'm a little nervous, but I'm pleading, please. And the neighbors, any of the neighbors that are against it, I am so for helping anybody in the neighborhood, I'm sure there's several people that'll attest tonight that I'm here to do anything to help from any water erosions or anything, or if the neighbors needed any help, I'm here to say, I'm here to help, and I want to do something, you know, and I'm just begging you to please grant us this.
Thank you.
Mr. Erickson?
I'm in support of the application.
Yeah, are you from Oregon City?
I live presently in Cambie now, although I was the resident of Oregon City for 17 years up to 2006.
What was your name again?
Dennis Snyder.
Dennis, okay.
My earliest recollection of working in that pit was sometime in the early 1970s, and we knew it as a sand pit hauling out of there, and we had, at that time, we were doing a lot of work in the Oregon City, Clackamas, McLaughlin Boulevard area, so we hauled material out of there, and we'd had other pits and stuff in the area. I can't tell you who we were dealing with at that time, I could probably go through 400 boxes of records and probably show you that we hauled equipment in there in the '70s with American Trucking Transport, which a company I was the president of, and still am. And we've been involved in a lot of quarry-type, sand and gravel-type operations, we hauled the material into the transfer station, the sulfide liquor ponds at Willamette, and we trucked stuff into, and we were the general on, excuse me, we were subcontractors on the Wadams Project, and some of the Lucas's worked down on McLaughlin, so, but I, as I remember, early 1970s, and I can't tell you who we dealt with at that time to haul that material out of there, but it's, like I say, we knew it as a sand pit, that's what we called it. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And they've been holding you to time, I should mention that we're allowing three minutes for these testimonies, there's been no problem at this point. Billy Toman and Brian King, please come forward.
Marcella.
Well, Marcella Bettner and Billy Toman, excuse me, and Brian King, I have to ask you something first.
Marcella's going to pass.
She's going to pass, okay.
Come ahead, then.
Does it matter which mic?
Nope.
Okay.
I'm going to hold you back, because I don't know if you're pro or con. You will be able to speak, though. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm Billy Toman, I live on Forsyth Road, 14,000 South Forsyth, which is just below the pit there. I came to Oregon in 1942 as a young boy, and in 1956, my wife and I got married, we, my dad owned the property from the top of Front Avenue down to Apperson at that time, so he owned seven acres in there. And after Doran, I got married, well, we bought the upper half of the three acres. So my property adjoins this property just across the road, and from there down the hill towards Harley Street. And so anyhow, we were quite familiar with this ground, our kids played up in there when they were young, and it, being a sand pit and all that, it had some cliff sides to it, and so the area was really just a kind of a flat area with a small cave in it and what have you, and we always were somewhat skeptical about the bank holding up, but it held up fine for all these years. Well, so anyhow, Doran and I built a house there, and with the help of Bill Erickson there, he excavated out the daylight basement part and moved dirt up here on the hill until we were ready and needed it for future work. And Bill was, by that time, was already in the business for some time, and so he was a close friend of mine, and we, we kind of worked together on different projects, but anyhow, he was a great help to us and a lot of people in the neighborhood, who was poor folks that were trying to build a house and needed the ground flattened, he would go in with his cats and, and maybe store the dirt up here, and that was before it was paved. The paving, as I recall, since I go up there quite regularly, was just behind the red truck there, is about where the paving ends, and they store lots of asphalt pieces and this sort of thing as road construction goes on. But the material moves pretty fast, because other contractors come up there and see what he has and buys truckload after truckload. Doran and I have yet to be bothered by any of the equipment running, we never hear the trucks, other than going by the house, and, and they usually are very courteous about when they go up and down the hill. If the street gets dirty, Bill has his sweeper go out there and they clean Forsyth Road off with the mechanical sweepers and what have you, so they keep the area rather clean. If you go up there now, you could have a picnic in his ground and would not be imitated, overwhelmed by the clutter of things, because they don't, they keep a clean ship. Now, as far as the area goes, you know, I've been there since, well, 1961, Doran and I built our house there. At that time, I don't recall of any zoning restrictions at that time, including this pit area. I don't know when this zoning took place, because we were just building a house, not a business, but I, you know, I don't recall when it got zoned residential. I mean, to me, that's kind of a area that has always been kind of a business area, rather than residential. I guess, in talking with Nancy at one time, I didn't realize that we had passed an opportunity to change the zoning in our area, and whether it was a lack of reading the mail, or what happened, we missed our chance to change some zoning. Because I have three acres that I would like to change the zoning on, but now that time is gone, and we passed it, so we're stuck with that. But we would like Bill to stay in that location, and it actually still provides a lot of accessibility to contractors and stuff that need to put something down on the ground until they get an opportunity to finish their construction, come pick it up and take it back out again. On the pictures that they had before, our house was the 14,000 that you see on there, our concern isn't so much with the pits, as the semi-trucks that try to come up that hill and make the corner. That's our biggest concern, because we probably get one a month that gets stuck there.
Not bad.
Half a dollar.
About.
So anyhow, other than that, we, you know, the other thing I was going to bring up, we never see any dust come off this place. If it's really that dry and dusty, he ceases to exist, or they spray it down with their water truck, but we, just living a hundred yards down the hill, we never have had a problem with our windows getting dirty, or the house getting dirty from it. I think he's a good, good neighbor myself, and I'd like to see people give him the leeway to go ahead and continue business there.
Great.
Any questions?
You said you built in 1961, and they stored the dirt from your property up there at that time?
Well, they, they were there in 1977. Now, I built my house in 61, so I built it actually, the pit was there, but they, Bill hadn't started using it yet as a dump site. Now, that's, that's the numbers I had and work with, and I may be off a little bit, but anyhow, he started in 1977, so we were already in our house, but he still had a cat business and a dump truck business and all that by that time, and so, I don't know, he may have hit it on his place, for all I know. He's a hard guy to find out from, so. Okay, well, any problems, any questions?
No, it's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to ask now questions. Brian King, are you pro, neutral, or pro? Paul Hauck? Pro?
Opposed.
Opposed, okay, you'll have to wait, then. Darnell Teal?
Daryl.
How's that?
Opposed.
Opposed. Rocky Younger?
Four.
I'm going to have Rocky Younger and Brian King come forward, then.
Could you explain the light system?
The lights.
Three minutes, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
I think we were asking him questions, but in fairness, we're on the three minutes, and your green is, oh, yellow is a warning, you've got 30 seconds, and then red means you need to stop. However, the former person that hit red, I think we were talking to him at that point, so doesn't include the question time. Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
I'm Rocky Younger, I owned Dale's Auto Records in Oregon City for years, started in 1953. Bill Erickson used to do business with my father, I used to go up to his place and deliver parts, I used to go with my dad, who used to buy equipment from him. And back in late '70s, a person by the name of Chuck Hagler, Chuck's Concrete, used to have an old Mack truck, we used to go up there and get dirt from him and haul dirt up there to him. So that's what I remember from the years growing up. That's been a rock pit and a dirt place ever since I was a kid. So I don't know who owned it back when I was a kid, but I know that when Bill was there, that we used to get dirt from him and do business with him for years. So I'm, I've been about 65 years in business in this town, so it's been a long time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Name's Brian King, I'm manager of House Construction in Oregon City. I've known Bill Erickson Heavy Construction for the past 38 years, and they've always been hardworking, honest people, and definitely an asset to our community, provided jobs for people, and I think they demonstrated their professionalism when they tore down the Danielson's Riftway last year and did all the site work there, I'm sure everyone in the community had witnessed that. Other than that, with total respect to you, Mr. Mayor and the commissioners, I just am confused at this point in our nation, at what point does our government help us stay in business, the small business people? Sometimes it feels like you take one step forward and the government knocks you back too, and I just don't understand at what point that we get any help from the government to, rather than knocking people out of work that live right here in our community, it'd be nice to know that we had help and some support to create more jobs in our community, especially the economy we're working in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Walt Smith, are you pro or con? Four?
Four.
Four, okay. Just a moment here. I guess it's Brian Johnson next, are you for or opposed?
Four.
Would you both step forward, please?
Let me go first, here?
Yes.
Okay, my name's Walter Smith, I live, I live in the Park Place area, and I have properties right there with, three places right within three blocks of this so-called pit that he has there. I'm also the last, I guess, call relic from the Park Place Water District, I was manager of the Water District for about 20 years, I believe, but I know that was ours, and it had been the sale of it, and all the records and everything, actually, the city has now been turned over. Then there was pictures in that, too, you know, of what we had with pipe, rock, and spoils, and, you know, type of different things. But my big thing is that on the, I just live around the corner, if you saw in the photo, Park Place School is just down a drop, and then you come around, I'm on Harley there, that's my own personal home, and you don't know that pit's there. It's nothing, you don't hear anything, it's just nothing, and it's just, it's just a quiet, smooth operation, and as TJ had said there, you know, it's helping people in the neighborhood. I've seen it when we had the snow on the ground, the city doesn't have the snow plows, their loader was going down front and clearing that main street out, which is, they've always been a help to the community that way. And so it's actually, and it's non-conforming, I don't completely understand that, because I look at the construction company that was, as a crow would fly, it was only about two or three blocks from me, which would be the one on the bottom of the hill, towards the new ramp and everything they're building, why, that wasn't there at the same time the city annexed the Park Place area. And one other point I wanted to make, oh, and one of the things, I was also on a committee when we did the transfer over to the, you know, to the city and everything, and everything was supposed to, because those people had horses, and just about everything there was to have, you know, which would, you wouldn't see in the city now, but as long as they had, like as reading was here, that as long as it stayed within that ownership and they, and they didn't go away, they stayed there, so, anyway, that's, it's a good business to have in the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
Brian Johnson, 17, 800 Cornell Place, Gladstone, Oregon. I own Johnson City. My family has worked with Bill Erickson all our lives, so they'd be my grandfather, my dad, myself, and my son now. So we would haul up material, but you have to understand, the reason for these kind of things is if you dig out something that's got sod in it, you can't take it to Portland Road's pit. You understand that? You can't dump organics in a landfill pit. So you need a place that you can take it. So that's one reason these guys will scrape, and so they grind this up with a machine, and so it becomes like a topsoil, they separate out the rock and it turns into a topsoil, but the grass has just been ground up to like compost. So when you look at that picture right there, and you see the grass on the top, that stuff can hydroseed literally in a couple of weeks, because you've got wet material that's just like fertilizer. So you could take an aerial view, and that could, that would be dirt one week on an aerial view, and it will be covered with grass. So, and two, basically, so he's been there as long as I can remember. Because I used to ride around when he did stuff for my dad and my grandfather, and they were called Cat Skinners then. A little kid on these guys' laps, and of course, you're a little kid, that's what you wanted to be, of course, you know, was driving heavy equipment. But two, Bill just took his machine, like they were saying, he's not necessarily, stuff is there every day. He just took his machine down to the city of Gladstone and had a pile of stuff where the city digs out stuff at Gladstone, puts it in a huge pile, because you can't take it to, like Portland Road, because it's got stuff in it, okay? It's got wood, you can't put organics in a pit. So there's your big thing here. So they had a pile that, twice the size of this, three times, four times the size of this building, so he goes down there and screeds it off, so they have a huge pile of rock that they can use to backfill ditches that they don't have to buy, a pile of topsoil that goes out of there that the city can use for whatever, and separates it all. So then guys like us can take our stuff up to this pit, and we will take stuff up there, then we can haul back topsoil. But then, too, it's like you have staff that doesn't, that's making judgments on a piece of land, when she probably wasn't even born when he's been there. You know, there's one thing, when you have people that live in a town that have been here forever, and then you have hired on people that might not have ever even lived in this town, because I don't think, he's 79, or 78?
79.
He goes to work every day, because it's a family business, like my family business. So I hope you think about a guy that puts people to work, just like the, up on the hill, he built the bank, did the bank across the street a few years ago, he's done stuff for the people in this community for years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Lane Rowland, opposed or for? Blaine Rowland, opposed or for? Not here? Bronson Blather?
Four.
Okay, what?
Oh, they were outside.
Blaine, are you for or opposed?
Opposed.
Then I'll have to wait, you have to wait, I'm sorry. Bronson Blather?
Four.
And then, yeah, my apologies, then Dan Sears?
Four.
Would you please both come forward? It's gonna be a while there, Blaine.
Start?
Yes, go ahead.
Bronson Blatter, or Harry Bronson Blatner. I was born and raised in Oregon City. Only spent four years out of Oregon when I was in the service. I have property which has been passed down to me from my father and mother out in Redland, Oregon, which is still Oregon City. And we also have property, my wife and I, on top of the hill in Oregon City. All I can tell you is that when I was going through high school, I rode bike, motorcycles, and Forsyth was a very good motorcycle road. And all I can remember is going through, is every time I'd cross by there every two or three weeks, there'd be something different there. You'd have boulders, you'd have dirt, sod, anything. And you never know what equipment you'd find there. Well, when I got back from the service and worked, started working construction, there was always different material there. Ten years ago, I was able to be an employee of Bill Erickson, and I still am. I'm one of his main truck drivers. And you cannot tell by the photos, after you can take one, one week, and even a day apart. Boulders come in and out of there like crazy, the dirt, the rock, asphalt. You can't tell by the photos what's there all the time, because it's revolving around, sometimes they'll come in there, go in there to pick up a load of boulders, and it's not there, and I'd have to call away, where are they? Well, they're being gone for a week. Next time I go up there, have to go up to the sandpit with other material, I've gotta ask him where he wants it put. But there's always been something there, and equipment there. I haul all the equipment for us, our smaller equipment, and there's been times that we've had four or five trackos up there, sometimes one. I helped haul the conveyors up there a couple of times, and in and out. So the topsoil's been in and out of there, and the green piles you see there with the green vegetation is the topsoil that the grass is grown over top of. We've had that from one end of the, the three different properties at one time, down to one end of the property. And then boulders on one side, rock, gravel, round rock, but, and I've never had any complaints, anyone come by or stop when we've been loading, unloading equipment or materials and complain about something. Every once in a while, Bill will come by and go, hey, it's a little dusty, water it down, so I have to go down, get the water truck, bring it up, and wet it down, or grab the broom if it's muddy, or the roads are a little wet and we trap dirt on the road, and we just sweep the road down, even that armpit corner right there. So I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sears?
Hi, Dan Sears, one four six two zero, South Forsyth. We own Sears Greenhouse and Farm. I've been the operator since nineteen seventy-three. Lived on Forsyth for sixty years. Also own a house on one six three one two Hunter Avenue, which is about a half mile north, excuse me, south of the site. Our Forsyth Road Farm is about three-quarters of a mile to the east of the site. I've been by this site probably every day, if not once, ten times, from the late seventies forward. I can equitably say that that site was used for excavation and, you know, what everybody's talking about here, including lot two oh one. I mean, that's very vivid in my memory. And one thing going way back in history, our family goes to eighteen ninety-eight. The reason that's called a sandpit is that bank was originally used to be the base of Forsyth Road and the roads in the Forsyth area. So actually, I think this use probably goes back a hundred years in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Frey Rep, are you for or opposed?
Four.
And Janine Seeger?
Opposed.
Okay. Frey Rep, come on forward, I'm gonna ask some more people here yet. Oh, is that the end of our list?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, very good. Yes, come on forward.
One more, there's one more.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you, my name's Frey Rep. I own Frey's Company, and I have properties and rentals that are adjacent to Erickson Construction and around the area there. Been in business twenty-eight years in Oregon City and around. And it's really critical that I tell you people that you have to work with us, small business owners, and without us, mostly people wouldn't be in business, because we hire, we hire the people that need the jobs. And if you shut him down or whatever, you're gonna have unemployment issues right away, immediately, because they can't afford, you know, to go under. And it's hard enough to stay in business. This piece of property, the picture's showing, he's done nothing but make it better, and I can overemphasize, he's made it better, he's made it safer, just as I've done with my properties, because we have pride. Someone mentioned, well, has that truck ever moved? Well, I thought I was the only paranoid businessman that always parked my stuff in the same place every time. And Mr. Erickson does the same thing, I noticed that. He parks his stuff in the same place every time, because sometimes our employees, you have to think for them, so if you don't let them think, it gets safer that way, so you say, this is where you park it always, and then nothing gets hurt. And I say that jokingly too sometimes, but this is really critical, that you people have to work with the small business owners, as us, and we're an asset to the community and everything else. And without your help, key word, without your help, we can't stay in business. And Bill does the same thing that I do. He's got an awful lot of pride in his son, with an S, and they, you will never, never see, I've never seen it, any dust, any noises, anything come from there. And if anybody was to complain, I'd be the first one here. But I do the same thing. I take pride in Oregon City, in my business, and hiring people and stuff, and I'm a family-owned business too, and so please, take all that into consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
George Milliken, are you pro or for?
I'm for.
Would you want to come forward too?
My name is George Milliken. Our family moved from Silverton, Oregon to Gladstone in nineteen thirty-six, when I was seven years old. And we spent several years there in Gladstone, and I got to know that area really well. We used to play up in the woods up there. Later on, we moved to West Lynn, and then the family business, I was involved with that for many years. We were petroleum distributors, and at that time, we owned five properties in Oregon City. When that went away, I went into real estate, and I was twenty years in real estate and retired just a few years ago, and did quite a bit of development work with Bill Erickson. And I'll tell you, I've done it with, I've had other people do excavating for us in some of the projects, but Bill Erickson, he doesn't do anything wrong, he does everything right. I've never seen, known anybody that takes any better pride in his work than Bill. And I think the reason Bill wanted me to come and talk was from the standpoint of a real estate. How does this affect the neighbors? And I, just to refresh my memory on the place, I drove up by there the other day, and I don't believe there's a house in the neighborhood that can even see that place. And I can't imagine what they're complaining about it for. I guess maybe if you lived up on the upper side and you stood on the hill, you could maybe look down and see it, but I don't think, I don't believe there's any residents in that area that can see that place from their home. So I just, I just can't imagine why anybody's complaining about that. It's been there for so many years, and Bill has been there for years, and I just hate to see him get put out of business there. Thank you.
Thank you.
We now have Paul Houck, Blaine Rowland, Darrell Teal, and Janine Seeger are opposed, is my correct city recorder on that. So we'll start with Paul Houck and Blaine Rowland, would you please come forward? Is somebody in the back? Are you, Mr.?
Paul Houck.
Okay, very good.
Live in Oregon City on Hunter Avenue, and thank you, Mayor and City Commission, for allowing me to speak. I have to say, with the three-minute clock, those who work with me would know that that's a lot of pressure, so I'll try to keep it short. I moved to the area in nineteen ninety-six, so I don't have the tenure, some of the people have already spoken. I have a young family, daughter born in ninety-two, my son in ninety-four. And so with the young family, a lot of community service, coaching basketball teams for both girls and boys' basketball coaches at Gladstone High School. I estimate I've made some twenty-four thousand trips past this location in the last sixteen years. And while I don't have an infinite memory, I'm a fairly astute guy and pretty attentive, and my concern is on the expansion of the area. I don't know Bill Erickson, I don't know much about his business, and so this is not a personal thing for me. It's just an observation, I think Laura Teraway's satellite photographs displayed some substantial changes between two thousand and two thousand and ten, and those are the changes I'm concerned with. I think the city's original decision is fine to allow non-conforming use in a designated area. My concern is that the city would modify that or expand it to allow greater use of the area, particularly that lot defined as Lot two zero one. That area has changed, in my mind, substantially, and again, I think it's supported by the satellite photographs presented. Thank you.
Thank you. You did very well. Timeless.
I need to let my coworkers know that.
Oh, hi, I'm Blaine Rowland, I live at one six zero five zero Front Avenue, I'm about a hundred yards south of the site here. I'm a, I've done business with Bill Erickson over the years, I moved there about eleven years ago. Throwing rocks at Bill Erickson would be like putting down Santa Claus, really, he is a good guy. He runs a very good business, I love his employees, he's an honest, square, reliable guy, he's everything that you want in an excavator. A lot of the materials that have been on this site are on my lot right now. I've done a lot of deals with Bill over the years for large rocks, small rocks, excavation, sewer work, and other things on many projects. Acoustics are kind of relative to where you are on the hill. If you're downhill and upwind, you don't hear or see anything. I'm in a location where I'm downwind, and I can hear it very well. Particularly what I hear is the backup beepers on all the vehicles that are in there. Brakes, dump trucks when they dump, when a dump truck dumps the tailgate, which weighs probably a ton, slams back, and you can hear that from a long ways away. I can hear the rumble of the conveyor and things like that. But the use of this site has ramped up significantly in the last five years. It was more or less an overgrown junkyard. When you say material storage, that's kind of vague. What was stored there for a long time was basically pieces of junk that had no value whatsoever, except for scrap value, engine blocks, old truck chassis and things like that. The paving happened, I'm gonna say two thousand and five, maybe two thousand and six. I don't think a permit was pulled for it, but all the blacktop went down rather recently. And then after the blacktop went down, is when there's been a significant change in the activity there. It is cyclical and seasonal. Normally, there's maybe one truck in that site in a week, and then at other times, there might be a hundred trucks in a week. They're vague numbers, but that's the cycle of the business. The main point I want to make is that it's a grandfathered-in-use, but this isn't the nineteen sixties anymore. You can't buy a Coke for a dime, you can't buy a car for nine hundred dollars, and you don't let your youngest son, Timmy, go explore a coal mine with his dog and a flashlight. It just doesn't happen that way anymore. And the neighborhood has grown, population pressures are getting closer to this all the time, and it's just an odd use in the middle of a residential neighborhood. He had a lot of this use on top of the old dump site years ago, and some other spots, but he's lost those sites, and now there's more pressure on this site to be used for transferring materials. I'm hoping the city has a similar site that could be used like along I two oh five or someplace where the zoning isn't residential, and a more appropriate use for this kind of activity. But I want to stress again, I like Bill, and I like his business and everything, he runs a good show here, but this dirt storage yard in the middle of a residential neighborhood just isn't appropriate anymore. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I guess, Janine Seeger, is that correct?
Hi, I'm Janine Seeger. A little nervous, I haven't spoken like this before. I live on Taylor Lane, right behind Forsyth. Excuse me.
It's okay.
I like Bill Erickson as well. And it was a difficult decision to come talk today, because he is a good neighbor. Our houses butt up against each other, my husband and I, and our kids live on a farmhouse back on Taylor Lane. We have ten acres that skirts Forsyth. We garden, and we see Bill in his backyard, and we talk, and he gives me great tips, and we think very highly of him and his family. And we've met his son, Grant. And as a father, I hope that he respects that my largest or greatest concern about him having construction in a commercial, using commercial construction in a residential zone, is the safety of the children. There are at least twelve kids on Taylor and Harley. I have four of them, and they're all under the age of seven. There's a bus stop on Forsyth and Harley, there's a charter school just a few blocks away. I will not let my daughter, who's seven, walk even with me, of course, I wouldn't let her walk alone, but I would not let her walk with me to the bus stop anymore, because the trucks that come by are so large, their tires are actually larger than my daughter. And I have had a situation where a truck has gone by, and I do believe their drivers are respectful, and I'm not criticizing that, it's just the size of the machinery in a residential area seems inappropriate, especially with children. And I know that that is not your, your task today is to consider changes throughout the time, and you have a lot to consider. I would be remiss as a parent not bringing up my concerns of my children's safety, and the safety of the kids who live on Harley, and who play on Harley, and have to evacuate when a truck comes in, whether it is Bill's truck, or whether it is a water truck, or something like that. My husband and I did have a construction company, I respect construction. We ran a residential construction company for eight years in Portland, and I have nothing against small businesses. And my concerns, again, are for the safety of the children, for our environment, and our residential community, especially in a declining market, that we maintain our residential values. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have one question.
Yep.
Ma'am, can you?
Ma'am, ma'am, one of our commissioners have a question.
I have just one question.
Yes.
When you're walking, is there a sidewalk where you walk?
No, no, it's a dirt road. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, we've gone through our testimony. Normally, this is a time for rebuttal, and I think it is a time for rebuttal.
Excuse me, Mayor, there's one more, Darrell Teal.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry, Darrell Teal, my apologies, I missed you, come forward.
Mayor, do you want to make one comment? The area issue we're talking about.
Hold on, I think you, I think you have a chance for rebut, the owners have a chance for rebuttal after all this goes on. Yes, the appeal, appellate, excuse me.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Darrell Teal. My property abuts Mr. Erickson's Lot 201. We've been there since 1974, built our house, raised our kids, enjoying that. And there has been huge, huge changes, okay? I remember the little cedar water tank Mr. Smith talked about. In about that same period, I think it was when Mr. Erickson purchased the first lot numbers, I can't remember, 1300 or 1400, something like that. One point that hasn't come up, that I think is very, very important, is when did Mr. Erickson own or purchase Lot 201? 201 was a part of a lot north of that and east, which now is owned by the Reeds. Prior to that was Dr. Gibb, the dentist here in town. Before that was Edward Johnson, okay? Just prior to when the Reeds brought the property, and I like forgot the name, it's Tony and Mona, sold 201 to Mr. Erickson. And so I know Dr. Gibb did not have a dirt business on his property. It was overgrown with trees, the fast-growing poplar trees or whatever, okay? Yes, we can look out our windows and see the pit. We are one of the neighbors that are affected. We are also on the east side, we get all the westerly winds. We can't keep our windows clean. When they dump the rocks, these bowlers that everybody likes so much, it sounds like a freight train wreck, okay? The diesel smells. And they do start early, they do work weekends, usually not Sunday, I don't know of any Sunday, but certainly on Saturdays. When they start up, our day has started. We have to, we have to get up, we hear, we hear a lot of noise down there. We also have, we can't keep the windows clean, we can't ever leave the houses open, and I'm out of time, I guess, but Mr. Neely has given me the pass. Anyway, if you've got any questions, I'm kind of the neighborhood historian, so, not like some of these guys, but I can't help you because I'm in the immediate neighborhood.
When you say they start early, what timeframe are you talking? 5:00 AM, 6:00 AM?
Saturdays, no, 7:00.
7:00?
That's too early for me on Saturday.
Sure, Monday through Friday?
I don't know, I'm up and gone, but yeah, it can be early. You hear them? Any other questions?
Nope. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now it's time for a rebuttal from the applicant.
Would we give the half-five minutes?
Yeah, why don't we take a five-minute break?
That sounds good.
Five-minute break, woo, thank goodness, I gotta cheers.
We're coming back from our break, and it's now time for the applicant's rebuttal.
Mr. Mayor and City Commissioners, again for the record, Seth King for the appellant, and just wanted to present a couple of comments on rebuttal. And first of all, we do appreciate all of the comments that the opponents presented tonight, and wanted to say that some of the comments regarding the site operations were new information to us. These were comments that had not been presented to Bill Erickson, say, during his, his day-to-day operations. So we would like to take the time during the rebuttal period to consider those comments, investigate things, and hopefully be able to present you with some, some conditions of approval that might be appropriate to hopefully address these issues and, and allow the site to continue. Having said that, we'd say that, you know, whether or not the site is generating those impacts isn't really directed at the approval criteria. It, it doesn't address whether or not the site, you know, is a lawful use that's been continuous and has not expanded and so forth. So, you know, just want to make sure that you do understand that. And in terms of the approval criteria, we know that you received some comments from, I believe it's Mr. Hauck, I may have his, his last name wrong, that he, in his mind, that there had been changes as to tax Lot 201. And our response to that is that, you know, there, we have presented testimony that this has been continuously used as a pit site, and I believe it was Mr. Toman, one of the proponents, had testified that there was a pit there back in 1961, which of course predates zoning in the area. We've also presented testimony that the use has been continuous. You had testimony from a number of business contacts of, of Bill Erickson who have discussed the ongoing operations there. And we've also indicated that there has not been an, an expansion or intensification of the use there that's, that's contrary to the code. I mean, we do think that there, your code does not define those terms, and we want to present to you some legal argument on how to interpret those terms. I mean, for example, I think a term like intensification may make more sense if you're referring to a, a building getting larger. Whereas here, an activity may be occurring in the same area that it's always been, but if a business is busier, does that mean that it has intensified, that the use has intensified? Or does that just mean that they are still in the same location, still a legal, non-conforming use, but are simply busier? So we do want to present to you legal argument on, on that point. And then finally, did want to note that there was a comment about early hours on Saturdays, and we, we spoke with the business operator who's indicated that they, they rarely operate on Saturdays, so that, don't believe that would be an ongoing issue there. So, did you have anything you wanted to add? Okay, so we, we'll offer additional comments during the open record period, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have or to discuss with you now the open record schedule. Thank you.
I don't have any questions.
Not at this point, but hang around.
Mr. Mayor, one, one issue, and that is the one-day issue over the, the final day to decide.
Right, and during the break, Mr. Sullivan mentioned that the, we had proposed extending the record through March 21st, and, which I believe is a meeting date for you all. That would allow you two meetings after the close of the record to consider the open record material, make a tentative decision, then come back and make a final decision. We understand that based on the way things go, that you'll need an extra day after the meeting to get things signed and mailed, and we have no issue if you want to extend the record to March 22nd of 2020.
To use the statutory term, you're requesting an extra day.
Yes, thank you.
And is there any problem with that with anybody?
No.
So that's, I think that's fine.
Thank you.
And what the applicant has asked for, and any party has the right for a seven-day, is a more extended schedule, 14-7-7, plus the time to ruminate and then have a decision out by the 22nd of March. If, if that's okay with you, then you can incorporate that in your motion to, if you want to, you have to extend. And what they're asking is for a lot more time than just the seven days that they're entitled to.
Do we make that decision after I close the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. On my bullets there, I'm sorry, I didn't open the public hearing, but I look at the bullets and I didn't, I don't think it said I was supposed to, but in any case, we had it, and that officially closed the public hearing. All right.
Can we have Mr. Sullivan just explain to the general public what the 14-7-7 means and how we'll process and proceed?
Oregon law requires that if any party at the first hearing asks for a continuance or leaving the record open, and what the applicant has requested is leaving the record open instead of having another oral hearing on the matter, that you must give them one of those two things for at least seven days. What the applicant has done has to request an initial 14-day period so that they can, I guess, digest the material, and then a seven-day period for anybody to rebut any information. So in the initial 14 days, everybody can put in any information they want, there's a seven-day period to rebut that information, and then there's a, a final written argument, again, to which they are statutorily entitled. And then you have some time, a few weeks in fact, just to look at it and to, to come to a decision either at your first or your second meeting in March. Effectively, it's your second meeting in March.
I'm gonna try to repeat what you said.
So, so any person can submit written record, written comments into the record for 14 days?
And that's evidence as well as argument.
Okay, so that's, so that's 14 days the record is open.
For anyone to submit any written comments.
How many days to ruminate?
Seven days rebuttal.
So that's, that's, that's the first 14 days.
That's the first 14 days.
Okay, the next seven days will be for anyone to rebut that new evidence or written comment that's been submitted, and then the last seven days will be the applicant and their final written comment.
After the rebuttal closes, that's second period, nobody else can put anything, the applicant by statute gets final written argument, no new evidence, but a final written argument.
And then when, whatever the date we pick for the hearing, there will not be any public testimony at that hearing.
Decision only.
We close public testimony other than leaving the record open.
Correct.
Okay. So does somebody want to put all three of those periods into a motion?
I'll try. So I move to leave the record open for the 14 days, followed by seven days for rebuttal, followed by seven days for a written argument.
A final decision by the 22nd of March.
And a final decision on our second meeting in March.
Your second?
Second.
So call please, I mean, vote please.
Commissioner Mom? Yes. Commissioner Roth?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Yes. Oh yeah, that motion passes. Do we do some deliberation at this point, or do we just?
No, I would leave that to your March 1st meeting and then take a look at it.
All right, very good.
Just in terms of mechanics, are we able to submit materials by email? Or how do we?
Certainly.
Five o'clock on the day, for everybody who's here, five o'clock on those three dates that we mentioned.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll go on to our next item, which is the Water Master Plan Update.
Do you have a way for that?
I think we recently had a study session on that, a presentation on that.
Everybody's leaving, they don't want to hang out for the water plan? Oh my gosh, it could be exciting!
We only have a few more hours.
This could be exciting!
Hi there, how you doing, Grant?
Just taking a break.
It's all right.
I was trying to get together with my son tonight, I called him.
Yeah.
Good sir. Mr. Waldron, you want to go ahead?
Thank you, Mayor Neely, good evening. Mayor Neely and Commissioners, and tonight I'll be presenting to you Ordinance 12-1001, which is the update of the Oregon City Water Distribution Master Plan. We are recommending that, following staff's presentation and the applicant's presentation, approval of the first reading of the ordinance for the Water Master Plan. The Water Distribution Master Plan is an ancillary document to our adopted comprehensive plan, and the purpose of the Water Master Plan is to identify existing water system deficiencies and required improvements, analyze existing and future water demands, and develop a capital improvement program to meet those needs. As this is a legislative file, we've included our Planning Commission's recommendation to you. Included in the staff report for that Planning Commission recommendation are all of the findings for compliance with the city's comprehensive plan and statewide planning goals. And the city's consultant, West Yost Engineering, will be formally presenting the Water Master Plan. The public involvement process for this plan has included a public informational presentation on November 21st, and presentation to the Citizen Involvement Committee on December 5th, 2011, and September 13th, 2010. And as you know, we had a joint work session between the Planning Commission and City Commission on December 13th, 2010. Included in the record, I've included the staff report, summary of changes to the document, which are mostly cosmetic and have to do with some small tables in Chapter 3. The draft itself, which is about 200 pages, and the excerpts from the Planning Commission minutes from the October 10th public hearing and the December 12th public hearing. Also included is the record of the meetings, which includes links to all of the videos, minutes that are available, agendas, and through those agendas, the exhibits for this legislative file. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the Water Master Plan through a vote of 5 to 0. And during the discussion regarding the financing scenarios, the Planning Commission felt comfortable recommending approval of the Water Master Plan. Cognizant of the fact that a larger discussion regarding which funding scenario will be part, will be needed to address the implementation of the Water Master Plan is a, is larger policy discussion to be addressed, not only by the City Commission, but the citizens of Oregon City. Planning Commission is not making any recommendation which funding scenario ultimately be chosen, but they're comfortable that the water, draft Water Master Plan before you is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and the statewide land use goals. The Planning Commission acknowledges that under any of the financing scenarios identified, adequate water service can be made available to serve plan development within the city's urban growth boundary. And Walt will go through how that analysis was done. It's based on several different ways of analyzing what the future water demand is going to be within the urban growth boundary, including looking at land uses based on our comprehensive plan and land use designations. So the Planning Commission voted 5.0 to recommend approval to you. And separately, they discussed a, a separate item for future discussion, which is the possibility of acquiring well water rights as an alternative water source. This is not related to the Water Master Plan, but it is a recommendation that the city explore alternative water sources, including well water, at the time of annexation of properties into the city. And without further ado, I'll just recommend that you listen to the applicant's presentation, and if you have any questions for me about the process, I'd be happy to try to answer those.
Great, thank you.
Welcome back.
Hi.
I'm gonna go through this relatively quickly, I'm cognizant of the hour, but please feel free to interrupt me and ask questions as I go. You have, the commissioner's seen this presentation, members of the audience have not seen this presentation, but so I do have to go through it. I'm gonna talk briefly about the service area, I'm gonna talk about how much water the city of Oregon City uses now and will use in the future. I'm gonna talk a little bit about the analysis we did of the existing system and some of the expansion that we have to do to be able to provide service out into the full urban growth boundary that has been established for the city of Oregon City. And then I'm gonna talk quite a bit about financing and of course, answer questions. And then I'm gonna talk quite a bit about financing and of course, answer questions. Oregon City serves about thirty-two thousand inhabitants. We have almost ten thousand customers in the water system. And including serving the existing area, we have to plan the water distribution system to serve out into the urban growth boundary, because as the city grows, we have to sort of expand the network of pipelines to be able to serve that area effectively. And this shows the urban growth boundary and the city within the urban growth boundary. The average demand that you have on an annual basis is about four, a little under four and a half million gallons per day. But as you can see from this chart, the demand is not very even. You have a maximum demand of about seven million gallons per day on a, on a hot summer month. The maximum day approaches ten million gallons a day, and on the peak hour, you're using excess of twenty million gallons a day. And so the water distribution is sized so that you can actually meet these demands, and that's the existing demand.
I'm gonna stop you right now. When you say the peak hour demand, that is if the peak hour were translated in twenty-four hours?
Correct, yes, yes. You're using twenty-two million gallons per day, but you're only using that for an hour.
Right.
And then the, and then for the day, you're actually only using under ten million gallons for that day.
Right.
But you still have to deliver the water for that hour, and that's the basis for doing that. And preponderance of your demand is residential. And you can see from this chart, single-family dwellings make up the largest chunk, and then you have the multifamily dwelling in green, and you have commercial and institutional use, so. But it's mostly residential. Of course, residential is one of the reasons you have those peaks, because people do some landscape irrigation. I will talk briefly about your water system, and that includes your supply. Although the supply was not part of this particular master plan, the, your supply and water treatment is part of the South Fork Water Board's responsibilities, which you are clearly a member of. But the storage, metering, pump station, distribution piping is all part of this Water Master Plan. Storage, you have about eighteen million gallons of treated water storage in your system in five reservoirs. And the chart off to the left there shows that ten and a half of that is in your Mountain View two storage reservoir. Your new Mountain View one has two million gallons, Henrissi two, Boynton two, and the Barlow Crest one point seven five, so. And in fact, for your existing system, you had, you have adequate storage. You will need additional storage as you grow, but for now, you have enough storage. Your system is very complex, and the reason it is so complex is because you have a lot of altitude, and you can only serve a certain range of altitude with any given pressure zone. And these different colors are in here are all different pressure zones, and so your system is relatively complex, as you can see, and I'm not gonna even begin to explain this, but trust me, it is a robust system to be able to provide service at the appropriate pressures throughout the city. And you have a rather elaborate water distribution system, about a hundred and fifty miles of water pipelines. And at your workshop, we showed you some of the pipelines that we've taken out of the ground that showed the corrosion and the encrustation and so forth that takes place. So this is an important number to remember, the hundred and fifty-four miles of water distribution pipelines. Pipelines have an average life of somewhere between fifty and a hundred years. If it's steel pipe, it's even less than that, but a good new pipe that you would put in today probably will last you about seventy-five years. And so if you think about that, and you have a hundred and fifty miles, you divide that by seventy-five years, and so you need to be on a replacement of about two miles per year to keep up with the degradation of the system that's in place already now. And that has an associated cost to it of about two point three million dollars.
Per year.
Per year, for line replacements, on average. Now, as you grow, and I showed you the urban growth boundary, at buildout, and give, and you would reach that about the year twenty thirty, if you grew three percent per year, which is less than what you historically grow, and except right now, you're not growing that much. But on average, you grew quite a bit more than that. But at buildout, your average day demand is gonna increase to about seven MGD, and you can see the corresponding increases in the peak demands that you will encounter. And to serve that area, you're gonna need some new pipelines, and we show here only the major pipelines, the distribution piping. The smaller eight inch diameter pipelines that are, are gonna be put in by subdivisions and by developers as they grow, but you will have to build a network of larger diameter pipelines and some reservoirs, and these are shown on this chart. And you've got a two million gallon reservoir at the bottom there that's, that's gonna serve the fairway downs area. You've got the three million gallon reservoir up above to serve the Barlow area, and so there's a number of pump station improvements and pipelines that are gonna be required. The important thing when I get into financing is that the plan is that the facilities necessary to grow into the urban growth boundary will be financed from system development charges. When I talk about financing, I'm gonna be talking about replacing the existing pipes and the minor improvements necessary to improve service within the existing area that you have. And here are some of the improvements. A couple of these are to improve fire flow situations, and the others are for simply improving or replacing pipelines. And I'm not gonna go through these. And then I have, these are all renewal and replacement projects here. These are the ones that have been identified by your maintenance staff as being the most severe in terms of needing replacement. And so you can see that there's, right here, there's about ten million dollars worth of improvements necessary here. Eli, the maintenance supervisor, has a long list of replacements necessary, but I've only included enough to cover about ten years of improvements, because that's, simply because of financing limitations. Now, the interesting stuff.
Walt, I want to just insert one comment on the water pipeline replacement projects. What we're finding, I'll give an example of Clermont. That's an, that's an old pipe that needs replacement. Clermont is also a road that needs to be reconstructed. It's on our pavement management.
Right.
Schedule. And so we're kind of running into this, uh, you know, we don't really want to do a pavement rehabilitation project unless we replace the water line. If we don't have enough funding to replace the water line, you know, what do we do? Sort of, and we're working through that, but it's just one of those things that we were, we're running into.
And I went over this very, very quickly, but that is one of the key factors when you establish priorities. What have been the leaks? What's the repair history? How old is it? What's the material? And what are the road improvement projects coming down the line? Because you really don't want to go in there and rip up a road or replace the road and then come back and rip it up a few years later, because it's just not a good, that's not good public policy. This shows a history of revenues and expenses, operating expenses. And when I say operating expenses, I have excluded capital projects that you've made in those years. So in fact, you've sort of balanced the expenses with the blue revenue line, but of those, the red shows the operating expenses. And you can see that you've had in excess of, in two thousand seven, two thousand eight, you had over a million dollars available for capital improvements. But because of the relatively flat revenue picture, and of course, the increasing costs of operating this system, that difference now is down to about, a little over a half a million dollars, about seven hundred thousand dollars that's available right now for capital improvement projects. And that's given current rates. Now, you have already adopted a rate ordinance, which takes you out to twenty fourteen, fifteen, and with that, with that level of rates, you can see that you have about a half a million dollars available per year to do capital projects. Now, the key is, and I'll, an idea to include this time, a chart that shows you kind of where those expenses are, just so you get some idea. And I won't go through these in detail, but you can see salaries and fringe benefits are a key part. About one point eight million dollars by the year twenty fifteen, sixteen is gonna go to direct payments to the South Fork Water Board for the water that you're purchasing, and then the rest of them to come up with a five point two million dollar projected expend, operating expenditure in year twenty fifteen, sixteen. The year twenty fifteen, sixteen is, is important because, I'm gonna flip ahead to this, that's the year that you will no longer be paying debt service for your existing bond. And as you're well aware, your charter requires you to roll back rates once the debt service has been paid off. Now, what I'm gonna be talking about next is what does that mean in terms of rolling back rates? And I've come up with a number of scenarios. Now, the first scenario that I've looked at is if you didn't roll back rates and kept sort of on the, on the track that we've been on for the last quite a few years, where you've increased rates annually at three percent, and, and used the difference between your operating expenditures and revenue to fund capital projects. The second scenario would be where you actually roll back rates. And in this case, you would roll back rates to the nineteen ninety-four level, but then increase the rates allowed by that charter at three percent per year. The third scenario is the same thing, except you would only project an increase or show an increase in rates in those years that the commission actually increased rates. There's been five or six years where rates were kept level, and consequently, in this scenario, you would have less revenue, because you'd only have increases in the years that you actually increased rates. And then the fourth scenario is one where there would be no rollback, and you had actually a somewhat higher rate increase, so that you could eventually get to a sustainable level of revenue, so that you could be on a complete pay-as-you-go basis for making those two-plus-million-dollar improvements to the water distribution system on an annual basis, so that you're replacing the pipes at about the rate they're degradating. So those are the four scenarios, and I'll show these now. Scenario one is a roll, is no rollback, but you kind of continue with the rates at three percent per year. Anything, when I say no rollback, all of those alternatives will require a vote of the people to change the charter. So that's, that would be a given, except for the scenarios where you have no rollback. In this case, you can see by ten years out from now, you would be raising a little bit over a million dollars per year for capital improvements. It would not get you to a sustainable level of staying even, but you would be making some expenditures for capital improvements. The rollback scenario number one, or the, or the first rollback, is where you would roll back in twenty fifteen, sixteen, you would roll back the rates and have it, but calculate it on a three percent increase every year since nineteen ninety-four. And you can see under this scenario that the revenue is less than your operating expenses. So in this particular situation, not only would you not have any, any capital available for improvements, you would also have to make significant cuts in your operating expenses for operating your water system.
Before you, um, it's more a question for the attorney. Since we didn't do that three percent, would this, this situation still have to go for a vote? His indication was no.
As the gentleman indicated, any change to the current scenario requires a vote to change the charter.
And this includes this one?
Uh, yeah, if you have the rollback.
Well, it's a rollback.
There's an issue over the three percent.
That's what I'm talking about.
Right. And that is a matter of charter interpretation. I think you had Harvey Rogers come talk to you about that, and the charter is ambiguous, whether or not you want the three percent when you actually did it, or take the charter language and say it's three percent from nineteen ninety-six after.
So that's an interpretation question.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. The second scenario where you increased the rate, the effective rate only those years you actually had a rate increase, the deficit would even be larger. You can see it's in excess of a million dollars that you would have to cut out of your operating revenues. And remember that those operating revenues in, of, also include payments of one point eight million dollars to the South Fork Water Board, and there are gonna be increases there also, so you would, you would, in this scenario, essentially wipe out your operating fund in terms of being able to manage your existing system. So, the third scenario would be no rollback, clearly takes a vote. There would be a three percent annual increase till fourteen fifteen, and then a ten percent increase for one year, followed by two years of five percent, and then back to the three percent. This, this, you know, looks like, I mean, it's a large increase in, in those years. However, given that three-year bump that I showed, it puts you in a position where by the year, ten years out, you can see you're raising the two million plus dollars you need, so that you can actually maintain your system on a sustainable basis. Now, whether it's this scenario or others, the one thing that's important that I, and the point I want to make is, on this system, you're on a pay-as-you-go basis, you have no debt. And in fact, whatever scenario you're, you're operating under, you will have no debt for the water distribution system. You will have paid it all off by the year twenty fifteen, sixteen, which is, I mean, that's good news, and you have an excellent water system. So the challenge ahead is to continue to have an excellent water system, and that's gonna take a dialogue with the folks, with the public, because it does involve some changes to the charter.
I'm not gonna ask you to do anything right now, but because this, this is, this is something in the future that we have to deal with in the future. West Lynn also has a limit in terms of their increase, but it's five percent. And I'd be curious at one point, when we're trying to make a decision, if rather than three, ten, five, three, what about five throughout, and what might that do to the picture?
Yeah.
Would it be consistent with our other members of South Fork Water Board, for one thing?
And I have a rate model, so that'd be very easy and scenario to look at, and I think in some work session, we'd probably want to do that, because I think that that's certainly feasible, yes.
The other question I posed, I believe, at our work session, and now we've got our attorney here, was our South Fork Water Bill is part of our city water bill. We don't see it distinct. If, if, if we're, say we suggest a scenario, it doesn't pass, South Fork Water Board isn't bound by what we do. And of course, we have, we have half of the board members there, but if it opts to have an increase in rates that exceed what our rates are, are, are we actually obligated to meet those rates if we separated the water bills into two portions? Whether we would, be, be, whether, my concern is, okay, we, we have three percent increases, and all of a sudden, they're going to ramp up for maybe specific reasons to four or five percent?
You probably couldn't do it under your current structure, because you only get one bill, and that's from the city water.
Yeah, I meant, that's my question, is whether that could be worked out.
No, I understand, I understand the question, and I'd have to look at it, and whether you could bifurcate the bill and make the South Fork Water portion exempt.
It's on the same bill. Except it's not, we don't, it's not a wholesale purchase of water. It would be passing on our costs to the customer.
There's something for you to think about.
Well, and probably to run, run past bond council.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Anyway, based on all that, I am recommending that the city begin a dialogue with the citizens to begin to, you know, let the citizens understand what we're up against.
Right.
I think that our goal should be to go towards financial plan scenario number three, which is to be self-sustaining. I think it's wise to operate a system so that you don't have to incur debt to do replacement projects, that you do that from ongoing revenues or a pay-as-you-go basis. I think it is important to at least bill separately, so that the users can see what part of the bill is for the water distribution system that is controlled entirely by the city commission, and how much of it is associated with the South Fork Water Board and controlled by that board. And that, those are my recommendations, and, you know, I'm glad to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, and I guess, this is for staff, maybe, like, where do we go from here? We're gonna make, do we make a recommendation, and then we take it to the community?
Well, first, we'd like to adopt the master plan.
The master plan we have to deal with.
Okay. And once we have the adopted master plan, then we know what we, what the plan is in terms of need. And then at, we- And then, we can then look at rate structure as well as SDC updates. Because we should, once we have a new capital improvement program, we also need to look at updating our system development charge for water. So those we'd all take to, I'm not sure when we'll do the SDC update, but we'd want to start working on the rate discussion this spring. And that's something we'll discuss at your retreat on Saturday, too.
And then, I guess the first question, there's a couple of things we could talk about after we take the action, that we need to take tonight, and that's a first reading of the ordinance. I do believe we should ask whether there is any public testimony at this time, and I'll see if I can pull my sense.
I think we have one.
One.
No, we have two.
Two.
Yeah.
David, here.
I'm hung.
All right.
David Friddo, will you please introduce yourself? No, you're not David Friddo. Paul Edgar, will you please introduce yourself, and David Friddo, would you please come forward? I saw him here.
I was gonna speak on the other topic, but I put the wrong.
Which one?
Oh, we put him on the wrong one. He's on 7B, not 7A.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
My name is Paul Edgar Kanema. I have read this water master plan many times, and I have sat through many sessions redoing it. In a couple areas that I felt were important, and I've asked for some adjustments, they have not appeared whatsoever. One is, as an example, is the continuing reflecting extensions of pipes into areas like the metro natural area in Kanema. We all know there's not gonna be any residential development there, but in fact, when you take a look at these plans, they still show pipes there. But that type of oversight scares me, because it shows that in fact, that they are not listening, or they are not willing to make adjustments. But one of the areas that really concerns me is in the finance. I continue to see where the operating revenue coming in is being diverted to a building fund, and this then depletes and allows for a lower dollar amount cushion in the area of revenue that should be there to support maintenance and operations. Now, I think that this puts the bill payer into jeopardy in the sense that now all of a sudden, we show inadequate operating cushion in operating revenue, then somebody says, okay, well, we've gotta build that up, so we're gonna have a rate increase. Well, the rate increase is really going to be there to cover up the money that's being diverted to the building fund. I think that this building fund should be on its own. It's, we should not be taking revenue, operating revenue away from this water, from the water operating budget. When we need to fund maintenance in this required need, and it's just required, that we, that we do certain amount or percentage of maintenance of pipes within this massive miles of pipe that we have, that we have in the ground. That's pay now or pay later and pay greater when you don't do it. But how do we do this? And some of this can be done by actually bonding some of that into a steady stream where, out of future revenues, but you do it in the smartest way. You set up a plan, and you follow your plan, and you do it like where Nancy is talking about, a road gets opened up, you know you gotta go into that road, you've gotta put the pipe in at the same time, because if you go back and cut it open after the fact, somebody's gonna be out there with a gun to shoot, not me, probably you or somebody else, because they'll say, how dumb is bureaucracy? So we just need to think smarter. We need to take a look at those budgetary numbers and see what's happening, because I can assure you that water rates are going up, and when we add on top of water rates, road maintenance rates, yes, Mr. and Mrs. Housewife are watching that now with a level of detail. And if we're not smart, somebody's gonna have to pay the price for this, and it's oftentimes at the ballot box, and it's gonna be, it's gonna be hard on everyone. Thank you.
Just a question, I suppose, I'll answer, ask Nancy Fisher. The notion is that we might not have to go to bonded indebtednesses in future building projects, is that not true?
That would be, probably more likely could happen than if we did go bond to future building projects. And, you know, bonding costs a fair amount of money, too. It does give you cash in advance so that you could have plenty to plan your water projects with the road projects. But bonding for anything does have extra costs because of interest, and you end up paying that off for a long time. I did want to respond to Mr. Edgar's comment about the pipes in the Kanema vacant areas. Those are there so that we know, I mean, that is inside the UGB, and we may even want to have, we're not saying they have to go there, bottom line is. We're just saying if there are, if there's a determined to be a need for a water system in that area at some point, this is what size pipe needs to go in. It could be fire suppression for urban forest fires. It could be restrooms in a park, we have no idea.
Yeah, yeah.
Those are there so we know what, so if someone comes in and asks, what do we need there, we have the answer in our master plan. So it's not, we're not ignoring, we're just trying, we've tried to make that point several times, and.
You're planning ahead?
That's the idea.
Wow.
Yeah, so, just wanted to make that point.
Thank you.
Well, you've got, we seem to have no other members wanting to speak to this, so are we ready for a first reading? And then I'd like to have some other, make some other comments afterwards, but not tied to this actual ordinance. I hear a motion.
Move to approve for the first reading.
Ordinance 12-1001.
I hear a second.
Second.
It's been moved by, and seconded, and I guess we'll for the first.
This is ordinance number 12-1001, an ordinance adopting an update to the Oregon City Water Distribution System Master Plan, an ancillary document to the Oregon City Comprehensive Plan.
Commissioner Mum?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Yes.
Motion process 4 to 0.
4 to 0. The, I wanted to just make a comment to the suggestion of recharging, well, the water table for well purposes, I mean, for tapping wells. We had, we had testimony some time ago of an individual that lived outside the incorporated area of Oregon City, I think within perhaps, perhaps inside the urban growth boundary, who seemed to be pretty knowledgeable and testified on many occasions his development was occurring there. And he was stating that his well water level had dropped over the period of development there. If this, if this is, the well water serves other purposes for other individuals, and I would say the placement of the wells would have to be considered. But also, there's been recommendations that during the winter months, we look at recharging the water table itself, when we have excess water coming through the clacklings. To tap well water itself, I think, is something that'd be of great concern to me, because other people, other people use it at four wells, and if in fact, the water level is dropping in the areas around Oregon City, I don't know that's a viable alternative unless you have some way of recharging the water table. That's a comment I wanted to make, anyway.
Just a quick response to that, too, is, that's a good, good point to make. And mostly, what we're seeing amongst other municipalities and water providers is to use the Ocafor to store water. So you, just like you said, you bring the water in, and then you use the Ocafor storage, and then you recover it when you need it. So that's the kind of system, I think, that they were suggesting.
They were talking, okay. Okay, with that, I'm still, we're going into our, yep, second reading, this is general business, but it's second reading of ordinance 1110013. It's hung. Oh, good, it's not hung, thank you. Amending chapter 504 of the Oregon City Municipal Code related to process for issuing business licenses. And Mr. Conrad has flagged her, but I think David Frazier, since he was a former police officer, might go ahead and do it.
The chief is out of town this evening, and I sent the commissioners, all of you, an email about this earlier today, but it was not that early. It was around 3:30 or something, so I'm not sure if all of you received, okay. So I had a conversation today with the Chamber Commerce Director, and I guess in the, in the last few days, they've had a visit with their government Economic Affairs Committee, had a visit from both Chief Conrad and from Mr. Hunt about this ordinance. And after talking to her, my recommendation to the commission is that I think we should have the city attorney go ahead and explain to you what their responses were in their memo, which was in response to an earlier, I think, set of questions raised by Mr. Hunt. And I want Ed to go ahead and explain that, if that's okay. And then, my recommendation is that we postpone this and allow the city attorney some time to meet with business leaders and chamber representatives at the Government Affairs Committee. I want them to be comfortable with what it is that's being proposed. There may be some additional language changes and so forth. I know that there's been a number of those proposed by Mr. Hunt, but there could also be other input that we get from the business community that would make them more comfortable with this. Eventually, we need to have a draft in front of you that will allow the commission to decide without the semantics of the actual ordinance as a matter of concern, but really answering the question, are you comfortable with the risk of having one of these in the community, and do you want to deal with it proactively, or you, do you want to wait till one comes and deal with it, you know, after the fact? And I think that's really the question is, and that comes down to a values judgment, there's not a right or wrong answer. It depends on whether you want one of these, or you don't want one. But my goal is to make sure we get an ordinance that people are comfortable with and understand completely. So I'm gonna be asking the city attorney to meet with chamber folks, and if the commission is inclined to hear his initial report and then postpone the matter, I think that'll give us a little bit more time to work out the kinks.
Well, you have a memo from me, and it attempts to respond to questions I did get just before tonight's meeting, a memo from Mr. Hunt cataloging what he believes are errors in my analysis. I only had a moment to read it, my analysis really hasn't changed. There's a couple of things going on here. First of all, there's a concern over both federal and state constitutional provisions on search and seizure. I would point out that this is not done in a context of a criminal proceeding, that two cases from the 1960s, Kamara and C., which are footnoted, in my opinion, deal with the issue of administrative searches. There's an ability to decline, and then to have the local government get a warrant for it. But the, the rules for administrative warrants are different from those of a criminal warrant. Secondly, there's a discussion of administrative law, burden of proof, reasonable doubt versus substantial evidence, and errors of law as the reviewing standards. Errors of law, or variation on that and substantial evidence, are the common ways to review an administrative decision. It's what Luba does when you have a land use decision. If there were a denial of a license, that's what's commonly used in a court analysis. And, you know, what this comes down to is, what do you want to do? This is a policy matter. This was initially brought up by the chief, as I understand it, because of the blue sky issue. That's why it was put in, in the form of an emergency, because there, we didn't want someone to come back another year and get a license and then have to revoke it. So, but there are two things that the ordinance does regardless of blue sky. First of all, it does deal with the issue of, do you have to wait until there's a violation and then go back, or can you declare something's unlawful or a nuisance before and then deny the license? That's the first major change that this ordinance makes. And the second one is the appeals process. Right now, it is both hearings officer and city commission. What we did was to change that so that it is the hearings officer with the hearing, with the city commission being able to take that decision and re-decide it if it wishes. That's commonly done in land use. I don't see much of a problem on that. But there are lawyers, you get two lawyers and three opinions. My advice to you, my advice to you is that this ordinance passes constitutional muster, and if you want to adopt it, it would be valid.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to just make one comment.
Sure, go ahead.
I'm the one that asked the chamber to look into it, just because of the business license fund, you know? I thought it would be kind of good to have their input. So I'm the one that stirred this up. Thank you for cleaning it up, Ed.
Thank you. I think we have three, well, I'm not one of them. I think we have two people to speak to this, Kevin Hunt. Was it you, the response, although you said you didn't have time to look at the details, to the January 18th letter?
I got one today.
Okay.
Yes, I believe I still have one.
Okay, very good. Anyway, Mr. Hunt and Mr. Berman.
I believe Mr. Gifford had indicated to me he intended to speak also.
Well, he's not on the list yet.
Thank you, my name's Kevin Hunt, I live in Oregon City. Let me, let's get one thing clear. What Mr. Frazier told you, that the issue is whether you want one of these establishments, meaning a marijuana dispensary in Oregon City, that isn't the issue at all. Nowhere in this ordinance do the words marijuana dispensary appear. This is just, this is a red herring, and this is just an attempt to kind of push you and cajole you into passing this way over broad ordinance that affects the rights of every single business in Oregon City. If you don't want marijuana dispensaries, and none of us do in Oregon City, it's, there's a very simple way to deal with that. That is to add a provision to your business license code that says that no business license shall be issued to any facility that dispenses any controlled substance contrary to federal criminal law, period. Problem solved. What do we don't have to do? We don't have to pass an ordinance that amends your current perfectly fine business law ordinance by now permitting far more than you've just been told that it does. I also think you should postpone this, but not so that, not so that city staff can go and put pressure on the, on the Chamber of Commerce. Their Government Affairs Committee, and I thank you for, for having them consider this, Commissioner Mum, because I was informed that at the conclusion of the two presentations, their decision was unanimous to oppose this ordinance. That's why staff wants you to postpone this. The Chamber of Commerce's Government Affairs Committee unanimously, after hearing from the chief and me, said they, unanimously are opposed to this. They now have to present to their board, which is usually a performative procedure. So I can't represent to you what the ultimate decision of the chamber will be. But that's what's going on, that's what's going on. I'm sure you haven't had any better opportunity at the late time I distributed this to go through my, my response to the city attorney's memorandum. If I were to go over my response, I can tell you it will take seven minutes. That's how long it would take to do. And so it's gonna be up to you whether you give me additional time or not, but I'm gonna try to address the points I can. And those are these. First of all, you heard a concession from Mr. Kabaisman the last time I was here, that calling something administrative doesn't remove it from the constraints of Article 1, Section 9 of the Oregon Constitution and the Fourth Amendment. But you're hearing right now, it's administrative, it's administrative. The search and seizure provisions don't apply. We can throw the Constitution out the window, we can flush it down the toilet, because it doesn't apply, because this is administrative. And then he told you, you know, there's a lot looser requirements for an administrative warrant. Excuse me, this amendment doesn't require a warrant. It doesn't require probable cause. It doesn't require reasonable grounds. It doesn't require a scintilla of suspicion whatsoever that a business is violating any, any law. And in fact, it allows a search on the basis And in fact, it allows a search on the basis that someone thinks in the future it might violate a law.
After your three minutes, I got a hint the rest would take more than four, but do you want to open?
I timed myself at home. I think I can do it in five, four or five.
Well, it's kind of like Mr. Sullivan said.
You'll have another chance. We'll see it again. You'll have another chance to speak to it, and then we can decide at that time whether to extend the time. Okay?
I'll have no chance to speak to it. When?
Yeah, when it comes back to us.
It's going to come back.
Mr. Berman. Mr. Berman.
I just want to add a logic objection. I object to this process of sending it back so that it can be...
You've exhausted your three minutes, sir. And unless I hear three people here saying that you can have more time, I'm out.
I have 30 seconds of my time?
No. You've got three minutes.
You're addressing basically what you have here in writing, so we can read this and any other issues can be brought up.
Three minutes are up. Mr. Berman.
Michael Berman, Oregon City, class 83.
Don't pause too long. You've got three minutes.
Here we go, folks. I'm watching the clock, and I don't have a lot to say, but I do have some important things to say. The chamber did unanimously not want to do, let this go through. My question is mainly, what's the purpose? And that question I'd like to ask and then have answered it after my three minutes by either of you or both of you. What's the purpose? I believe it was functioning pretty well before the ordinance that we had in place. A lot of people may not believe this when I say it, but I'm kind of a free market guy, and I don't think it's up to me to dictate what comes into town. There was a paraphernalia shop that made it on the Main Street. It didn't last very long. There was a marijuana aid store or an adult store up by the Midway. It didn't last long. It's self-policed. I don't know that we need to... Because what I've heard is inflections of, do we want that type of business in here? I don't really care. I don't think that it's proven to be a place of criminal activity anywhere else outside of the fact that it's, there's a federal issue with it. It's not quite a serious thing in Oregon. I don't really care for it. I don't care to see Dotty's all over town either, but they're here. I think they're kind of squirting the lot itself. So my main question is, what's the purpose of it? The word amongst business owners, entrepreneurs, both home-based and on Main Street with brick and mortar storefronts, it seems ill-conceived, a little sinister, overreaching, and they all ask the same question, what's the purpose? We already have something in place that seems to have worked pretty well until this marijuana store, whatever it is, popped up. And then it seemed like people shot, you know, the powers that be created this situation where there was maybe an emergency, or we have to stop this thing from coming into town and, you know, destroying our virtuous city. The main question is from downtown owners, home business owners, who see it as overreaching, a little conceived, a little bit of post-9/11 paranoia and warrantless type of activities, what's the purpose? And actually, I brought this up this evening at dinner in a public place. I happened to actually be sitting next to a guy that's fresh out of Lewis and Clark, hasn't passed the bar. I showed him some of the information, and he laughed at it.
Thank you.
No, I'm not sure what you wanted the response on, but...
Just for our public, what is the purpose?
Just the commission. The purpose, as I understand it, was a request from the chief, which was triggered by the blue sky to look at the ordinance and to make two changes. The first had to do with, do you have to wait until there is a nuisance or a violation of law? Or can you anticipate that as part of the decision-making process to grant or deny a license or revoke a license? And the second was the appeals process. It was ambiguous. It had both a hearings officer and the city commission, and we suggested some revisions. So the hearings officer would always get the application. It was municipal court at one time, and I'm not sure that that fits very well with the commission being able to review the decision at its discretion. As I said, that's commonly done in land use.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a comment that I think you'll agree with. The issue of the porn shop would not be affected here because that, in fact, is covered in the Oregon Constitution.
In fact, we had a discussion of that with the former commission over whether or not that could be denied on the basis of content.
That wouldn't be an issue. It's a constitutional issue, and Oregon's constitution said... With that, I'm glad...
May I ask a question of one of the staffers, please? I'd like to ask Mr. Frazier if it's true that the business license for the Oregon Sky Foundation's business expired on December 31st, that they have not requested a renewal, and that they have indicated they have no intention of opening up in Oregon City.
Well, that's like three questions.
All those things are true, are they not?
The commission wants me to answer. Answer you.
Yeah. Let me, let me, I think it's irrelevant because the question is, we simply don't want a repeat performance.
Right.
And so, yes, they disappeared. We could face it again, and so I don't think that's an issue as far as I'm concerned. You can ask an answer if you want.
I don't see a problem with him answering it, though.
No, go ahead.
In an earlier email to the commission, I reminded you that actually on December 7th, it was disclosed to the commission that we'd issued the applicant a license for which the applicant would be able to seek renewal in 2012. It's only good for the calendar year, so if you issued it December 7th, it would be expired at the end of the month. And so is that...
The other part of the question was that they have not sought renewal, and it was reported in the year going in that they have no intention of opening in Oregon City. Aren't both those things also true?
I don't have any comment about the Oregonian. I was out of the country when that article came out. I haven't read it to this date, so the commission, I guess, could do its own research about what was in the paper.
You know whether or not they've applied for renewal. You certainly know that, don't you, Mr. Frazier?
To my knowledge, they have not applied for renewal.
Thank you very much.
And I'm pleased to see, because I was going to ask her to do it if she didn't sign up, but would Amber Holbeck please come forward? I was going to ask you to if you didn't. A lot of people come in and say, what a given organization has said. Do you want to clarify this? Identify who you are and who you work for.
My name is Amber Holbeck. I'm the executive director for the Oregon City Chamber of Commerce, and tonight, my intent was not to speak because it is policy of our chamber that we do not utter a final decision on any given matter until it is passed through our Board of Directors. So I have to be very forthright and say that other people from the public are essentially speaking on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce this evening. That is not appropriate, and that is not the way we do business.
Correct.
I appreciate the fact that there was an effort from the city to try to talk with the business community. That's something that we need to do more of, and that was a generous offer. Both Commissioner Mumm bringing that to the chamber, seeking business input on this business license piece, regardless of whether it's for a medical marijuana dispensary or what have you. The fact that it impacts business licenses needs to come through the chamber and the business community. The fact that our city manager was also wanting to spend that extra time and facilitate an opportunity with the attorney is also very much appreciated. I would say that it's premature to utter a decision on how the Chamber of Commerce and thus the business community views this particular matter, and I frankly won't go there until our Board of Directors has seen all of the detail.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So next we have...
If you want to dispose of that...
Oh, yeah.
Of what?
Yeah, my recommendation is that you postpone it until we have such time.
Did we agree to that already before you took the testimony? I thought we did, but maybe not.
So moved. So moved.
Can I suggest a date certain?
Yes.
And that's March 21?
So moved.
Second.
Call call, please.
Commissioner Mumm.
Aye.
Commissioner Roth.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
And Mayor Neely.
Aye. Next is Urban Renewal Commission Discussion and Appointment. We'll probably have some testimony on this. Let me just state that we had an interview scheduled at a session, and there were three applicants. Only one came forward for interview. Two withdrew, and I think one didn't specifically withdraw until certain things were clarified, and that'll probably come up. How do you, how do you want to proceed? You want to take some testimony before we go ahead?
Don't we have to go back and, because we decided that we were going to choose someone from those three?
Yes.
And so don't we have to take care of that issue first?
That's the question. Do you want to do that first, or do you want to hear testimony from somebody?
I don't mind hearing what citizens have to say first, and then going, and we're going to talk about all the issues anyway, so...
Let him go.
So we'll have David Prudhoe and Michael Berman, please.
Good evening. I'm Dave Prudhoe, Oregon City. I just had two quick things I wanted to comment on. One's a comment and one's a question. The first is, I'd like to speak on behalf of the applicant that showed up. I think Tom Guile would be a good addition to the Urban Renewal Commission. And he specifically spoke, and if there's anyone in the room that didn't hear him or didn't know that he put in an appeal, since he could not be here, to treat him fairly and because he's not able here to, you know, defend some comment or charge or whatnot, that he thought in the interest of fairness and common sense that because he's not here, that he'd be treated right.
I think that we do try and treat everybody fairly up here, and I'm sorry he feels that we don't.
Well, I don't know if he felt that.
I don't think that's what he was thinking.
Yeah.
I think he was talking about that if comments were made from the public, that he would feel like he would need to respond in some way, and I think we would all feel that same way if we were in that position.
Thank you.
The second is just a simple question. I'd just like to pass these out. I've only got three of these here. These are just a brief summary of Robert's Rules of Order, and my question has to do with the second page, about two-thirds of the way down. On reconsider? My understanding is that when you voted three to one to accept three nominees from the Steering Committee at Park Place, that that was a motion that would stand, and if there were any thought of changing that decision, that that would fall under, in Robert's Rules of Order, I believe, a motion to reconsider. And my understanding is that that would require, that it would be made by one on the prevailing side that had changed one's mind, and that also, if it was to reconsider, would require a three to one vote.
Would require a majority. Yeah. You're correct.
Okay.
You're correct. Now, we had a case of that not too long ago where, in fact, I was the one that abstained, therefore I could go ahead and put forward that motion, and that's why we're able to do that.
Yep.
Thank you.
We had two motions. Neither one of them carried, and then I abstained and gave up the gavel and put, because I abstained, I couldn't go ahead with the motion. Yeah. Okay. Mr. Berman.
I don't have a lot to say on this one either, and I think I know what the purpose is. And so mainly, I'm here, I met Tom Guile at the car show on Main Street. I'm also a Main Street, I'm a business owner, and found him to be articulate, thoughtful, balanced, fair. Obviously, I'm putting my endorsement in for him in that he's not here as well. And he is pretty darn astute after talking to him about some of these things that Urban Renewal's been a very big deal with Plaquins County, with some of the development on Main in Oregon City. And so, not knowing much about it six months ago, I've learned a fair amount about it. And I just know that at a prior meeting, somebody had asked Tom about a couple of questions, and somebody shouted out, well, I know the answer. And I think Tom knew the answer, but in the sense of brevity, probably didn't want to go down that road too far. And that's about it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have before us a email... Oh, Nick, I'm sorry. Nick, please come forward.
Hi. My name is Nick Durkman. I live in Oregon City, and I really want to talk about the process because I think it's really, the interview process is really up to you to go through and make your decision in terms of the candidates. I would like to go back.
Can you speak up? I guess I can hear.
Okay. Sorry.
The mic's not on?
Oh. Okay.
Please come forward.
How about now? Is that better? I still would like to see the other candidates considered. I still go back to the general membership and the, you know, why we have neighborhood associations. And I mean, I understand the way the, you know, our bylaws were set up, and I did, as I think Tom and others have said, that I was involved in the redesign of our bylaws. And I don't think, and I can say I didn't intend for it ever to take away the rights of our general membership and really getting people to participate and be active in the neighborhood. And also, I think we do have a lot of people that have started participating, and they're new, they're new to the process within Park Place. I think we've gone through, you know, times when there hasn't been a lot of participation. And I think, you know, there's clearly interest in this topic, so this topic actually has created more participation, which you would expect.
It always takes a hot topic to get it out.
It does. I mean, I'm involved in doing the newsletter, and I, you know, hot topics are good to get people involved in the process. So in any case, I mean, I think there's two aspects. One is from the, your decision process, and I think it's really important to have multiple candidates for you to consider. And I think, you know, I think the minimum of three was, there was a decision made at the point in time when the bylaws were set up for the Urban Renewal Commission to have a slate of people you could talk with. So I think that's important. And I think it's important to recognize and respect the desires of the general membership that participated in our October meeting and consider those candidates in any case. Thank you.
Thank you.
The only way we'd be able to do that is to actually change the motion. And I think if anybody put forward the motion, I guess we would have been at the same kind of deadlock we were before.
I did put forth the motion, and we were deadlocked.
That's my point. And I guess if there were anybody asking me to go ahead and put up a motion, I know I think pretty much what the results would be. I think we have to move on with the healing process. Three people were invited, one person, three people applied, excuse me, and did it according to the bylaws of the Neighborhood Association. The decision was made by the majority of the commission that we would utilize their bylaws as a basis of accepting applicants. We didn't have to do it that way, but the majority of the commission did so. We had one person that came before the, for an interview, and there were the three applicants who were recommended by the Steering Committee of the Park Place Neighborhood Association. So I think we just have to act on what we have. And if somebody wishes to put forward a motion...
I'd like to make a discussion.
We can discuss.
Thank you.
I'm on the list.
Who's on the list first? Rocky?
Rocky Smith's green. You're not even...
I'm right there.
You're in the wrong one. You've got to go here now. Go ahead.
You're talking about somebody else. You're talking about something else. So I'm just going to, I'm just going to come and talk about what I'm thinking. I haven't thought through this yet and, you know, I try not to think through decisions until I'm sitting here having to make them. But here's some of my concerns. I appreciate Mr. Dirkman, is it Dirkman? I think I'm pronouncing you correct.
I missed it.
And I appreciate his comments tonight. I guess my only concern was that with what you mentioned tonight about respecting the neighborhood's recommendation of the two applicants was all that needed to be changed was the bylaws. I mean, if the neighborhood wants to go through that process, they change the bylaws and that's the way it works. So we had to base our decision on the way the bylaws are right now, which led us to the three applicants. I fully assumed we could make a decision on three applicants. Now there's not three applicants. And I don't think we can make a decision. I think, I think all three applications, or I think all three applicants that came to us probably were all people that were qualified to do this, to fill the position. I believe that Mr. Guile definitely is. But I've been on multiple hiring committees and other kind of processes like this and the process doesn't work.
When you have one.
When you have one. So as, I mean, and Tom's a good friend of mine as well. I think he's more than qualified but I don't feel capable of making a decision or a fair decision with one applicant. At the same time, I don't feel comfortable changing my vote to accept the two. There's no doubt that what's going on in that neighborhood is a complete mess. And I say that mess needs to be dealt with in some way. I think there's certain frustrations about our bylaws between neighborhoods, the Urban Renewal Commission bylaws, whether or not they should be consistent, whether or not the neighborhood should have, you know, the ability to change them. I think they should. But we have to still fix the problems that are happening right now with this process. I think there's multiple ways of possibly doing that. I don't know what's the right decision to do with it. I almost feel like we need to completely put this on hold until people calm down, try to figure out. I know this is on a work session agenda for Urban Renewal Commission to at least discuss the structure of the Urban Renewal Commission.
The city commissioner.
I think.
City commissioner.
City commission discussion.
Thank you.
Yes, it's a city commission discussion.
City commission discussion. So I kind of feel I'd like to have that discussion to see if that sheds any light on how we solve not just the problem that I see in Park Place but the problem of how we are selecting urban renewal positions anyway.
Yeah.
And I think that's a discussion that everyone needs to be involved with. I could see a lot of different scenarios. The possibility of opening all three citizen seats to be at large.
Yes.
That's one possibility. I think there's a bunch of other ideas that can come out. I just don't think, you know, I just don't think in the atmosphere and what we're dealing with is going to fix anything. And I definitely, you know, the next couple of months is going to be a real interesting process for us as a commission. We all want to move forward in a way that's healing and I don't think necessarily picking out of the three candidates that we accepted is going to do that. And I don't think picking the two that weren't accepted is going to do that. So that's where I'm thinking right now. I don't know where to go so I'm interested in hearing everyone else's viewpoint and then deciding where we go.
Well, I'm along the lines of what Rocky was just saying. I think Tom Guile may be the best choice for the seat. I just have no idea. I have nobody to compare him to. One does not make a selection. Personally, I think that it could be perceived, like we are perceived so often incorrectly, but it could be perceived that the Park Place Neighborhood Association Steering Committee is trying to push the political agenda to make sure they get one person appointed that they want there. And I don't think that's quite fair for the whole neighborhood. I mean, I think personally this commission should open it up and have them be a person from the Park Place Neighborhood apply and they should apply through the city commission, I mean, through the Recorder's Office, just like every other board and every other commission does, personally. I think in the fairness of it all, it should be opened up.
I put myself on the list and usually the mayor goes last but since I'm green, I'm going to go ahead and take a moment. The point is, you made a motion to that effect that didn't pass last time. I feel a little bit reticent to have that position unfilled for really any period of time. And in terms of the discussion, one thing we might consider doing is making a temporary appointment in the Park Place Neighborhood for a period of one year. I think in order to, I think the Park Place Neighborhood Association has to solve its own problems. And it appears that somebody's going to file a grievance. It'll be too late if we take an action but it's a grievance under their own bylaws. I, I'll tell you honestly, I don't want that position unfilled and I don't want that position temporarily held by a person who's already representing the Park Place Neighborhood Association in that, on that board when they've withdrawn their name from consideration for being appointed. I think one thing we could do is we could vote to appoint Tom Guile. He'd have to accept it after he gets back for a one-year period and then we could hope in that period of time the Park Place Neighborhood Association gets its act together. But.
Isn't that seat up for election, for renewal at the end of the year?
It's right now.
Oh, it's right.
Yeah. We're filling it for this year.
One does not make a selection.
Hmm?
One does not make a selection.
Well, that's.
Nor does it stop the fighting in Park Place.
No, so that's not going to deal with it.
Is it, Mike? Can I?
Yeah, go ahead, absolutely.
Well, I think that we can't force another, you know, we can't force these Park Place people to go through the application process like other boards. We have to respect their bylaws. That's just, it has to be. Secondly, I would kind of call for a little melding here of what's going on and that is, I think we do need a cooling off period. I think we need to take a couple of months out. If we appoint Tom in that couple of months period, fine, but I think things, we need to send it back to Park Place. They need to figure out their problem and then we move on from there.
I just think they'll need more than a couple of months.
Yeah.
And that's why I was recommending a tentative motion for a period of one year.
I have another question. Does it have to be filled? I mean, can we not run with nine people on the Urban Renewal Commission?
We need to look at it.
Is it against the rules?
Well, there's several things. I don't know that it has to be filled. The current position could stay on. It could, you know, there's so many other different, we need to talk about them all.
I mean, is there some rule, Nancy?
First of all, what does our bylaws say?
As far as the terms?
No, as far as the unfilled position.
Does it have to be filled? It, well.
Why don't you ask me?
You've got your, okay.
I guess we could do.
If you don't fill it, there's a holdover position where the incumbent remains on that board of commissioners. All right. And also, one other thing just for your own observation is that I would have some trouble with a one-year term when you have a three-year term to be appointed.
It's a mess. Now you have Nancy.
We got Nancy Walters. Come forward, please. You spoke?
I spoke.
Okay. Thanks, everybody.
Hello, I'm Nancy Walters, Oregon City resident. And I support Tom Guile as a candidate. I think he's well suited for this position and I support him 100%. At the same time, as you folks should be well aware, the reason that I dropped out as well as the other candidate, Carter Stein, is that there was a, it's been a very hostile process and we were intimidated and when I asked a simple question, who's responsible for ensuring that our civil rights are protected and that state and federal laws are going to be followed, I received no answer, none. Nobody's responsible for process. This would have been the third different process that I have been through as an appointee. Why is it that you can have no written process? It's different every time and who does it apply to? Is McLaughlin neighborhood going to be subjected to the same thing where you have this free-for-all questioning, you know, of any question in the universe can be answered at any, asked at any time of any candidate? That's a very frightening. I just don't think anyone should be put through this. I'm a volunteer. I've always done my best. I've always done my best job for the public interest. I don't think we deserve to be treated this way. Carter was offended, frankly, by the way that you folks characterized us in that meeting and that's all I have to say. It's been a very hostile process. The reason we didn't go forward is because nobody should be put in the position we've been put in. It's a very intimidating position to be put in and I don't think it's fair. Thank you.
Now we have another person.
Well, William Gifford is on the list, yes. Come forward.
Mr. Mayor and City Commissioners.
To everybody's Neighborhood Association meetings.
That's okay. And I really wasn't going to say anything until McLaughlin Neighborhood Association was mentioned. The Neighborhood Association, which I was a chair of that, and I know that the way that the Steering Committee in the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association works as a nominating committee, as an advisory committee to the general membership, because the general membership can't always get together to make all the decisions, and the Steering Committee meets and they make a recommendation to the general membership. The general membership votes on the Steering Committee's recommendation, not the upside-down situation that is, I agree, it's in the bylaws for Park Place. I just have to sincerely believe that Park Place, the general membership, was not really aware of the implications of making the Steering Committee not just the nominating committee but the actual only source of making recommendations for the position on urban renewal. It's upside-down whether or not it should be accepted. I think that the statement was made by Commissioner Roth that the position has to be chosen from the three that were recommended by the Steering Committee. I don't think it's quite accurate. You as commissioners don't have to accept what the neighborhood.
You're right.
Offers. Furthermore, as I understand, and please correct me, Mr. Sullivan, the neighborhood associations act as de facto advisory committees and serve at the pleasure of the city commission. That's not to say that the city commission has to be heavy-handed in how those neighborhood associations are run, but they do serve at the pleasure of the city commission and if the city commission determines that their bylaws are upside-down, the city commission not only has the right to, I think they have the obligation to direct the neighborhood associations to correct the situation.
Thank you.
Ms. Roth.
Well, what I mean in saying that we have to accept those three is in our last meeting, we voted to accept those three. And so if we're not going to go by our own votes, we don't mean much.
We voted to accept the applications, not to appoint someone off that list.
Let me just, William, I'm not going to have you come forward. I think we all, I'm not having you come forward. I thought you were raising your hand to speak. Oh, okay.
One more.
I wanted to respond to what Kathy just said. I think we all knew that we could interview the other two if we were. That wasn't, when she said have to, I think that was her personal comment on how we should proceed. We understood that we could have done it differently. We had two motions that came forward. None of them got a majority and frankly, I just don't want to prolong this process and that's why I went ahead and made, gave up the chairship briefly so I could make a motion to get this process going. I guess my argument will be that we have the three and I think we should choose from the three. I was suggesting a year but if we're not going to do a year, for three years. But we went through the process and we agreed to interview the three. Two chose not to be interviewed, that was their choice. We still can make a choice among the three. And we, and then we can probably give some strong direction to the Park Place Neighborhood Association to get its business in order.
I think we'd do that but not picking anyone.
I think so too.
I think it's a message.
I'll tell you, I have a problem because the incumbent, they will go forward.
We all have a problem.
The incumbent will go forward and I, and the incumbent withdrew their request to be amended, their application. Unless the incumbent.
I understand that too.
It's a big mess. It's a big mess. And I personally think that it needs to go back and they should work on their bylaws and they, in the interest of fairness for that neighborhood, it should be anybody who lives within the boundaries of Park Place Neighborhood.
What would be the repercussions if we appoint a one-year?
Well, you've got a thing with terms in your own bylaws for three years. That's what I have. I'm not sure you can cut it off at one year without amending the bylaws.
The other option, I think one of you mentioned it already, was to postpone making a decision on this for tonight until such time as you have your session and your discussion on the composition of the commission, which may or may not shed some light on, you know, how many seats you even have available.
Right.
Who should those, be occupying those seats and so forth.
That's right.
Well, I can make a motion and therefore nobody could, if everybody chooses not to make a motion, we're not doing anything and therefore we're not naming anybody.
I move to postpone this until we have our discussion and our goal session.
Second.
Do you want to hear from?
Yeah, we got Karen Mori was here to speak. I'll let her go forward.
Now that we've decided.
She's, I'm amazed that she doesn't come forward more often because I see her shaking her head and all so often back out there but.
You're supposed to pay attention. Karen Mori, I live outside the city of Oregon City. I have a question and a comment. I'll start with the comment. I think you were just very rudely maligned. Doug has sat in on every single interview process for every board and commission, every board and commission that is routinely televised, had their interviews televised, including the library board. There was nothing different about the interview process that was going to occur for urban renewal from any other board and commission in the last year since we've gone to the instant online stuff and I think that those comments were uncalled for. I have a question for Mr. Sullivan. Don't send me the bill. We have had, the bylaws for urban renewal specifically state that there are three-year terms and to stagger things initially, there was a one, a two, or two twos, two threes. We have had insufficient applicants for other boards and commissions. The incumbent's term has expired on December 31st. That position has been left unfilled until there were adequate applicants. Why is urban renewal different?
Because you can have holdovers.
But why would we?
That's really up to you.
But ordinarily, when board and commission terms expire and nobody's reappointed or appointed, that person who was there is held over.
And our past practice has not been to do that. We've allowed vacancies.
But that may be, but...
That's the way we have done it before. It just stays blank.
And that is within our bylaws, is it?
Your bylaws are silent on the issue of holdovers.
Okay. Then we can make that decision.
You can interpret it.
I suppose you can.
Because it's been one of our practices.
And the reason for holdovers is that if there's inaction, that nobody can do anything.
Right.
Yep. However, we're not talking... We're talking about fulfilling a three-year for a one-year period instead.
If you do that, you ought to declare a vacancy, so there's no lack of clarity.
I don't know if we can declare a vacancy.
Well, you're the appointing powers.
Yep.
Call for a vote.
Wait, you've got a motion.
It was made before Karen spoke.
Oh, that's right. Excuse me. Please read the motion.
Postpone the appointment until after the discussion at the retreat. And there was a second by Kathy Roth. That was motioned by Rocky Smith, second by Kathy Roth.
Paul, you roll, please.
Commissioner Mum?
No.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Abstained.
May I pass this over to the... I've got an alternative motion.
Yeah?
Thank you.
Okay.
And I'm no longer... Briefly, no longer chair. My motion is to declare the position vacant and postpone the election until we can have a major dialogue with the... Well, first of all, go through the process of how, if we want to make alterations to the nature of the urban renewal commission. And should we not do so, to then request the Park Place Neighborhood Association to bring forward another slate.
Second.
Say it again.
To declare the position vacant, to then go and make a... Have our discussion and determine whether we want to change the nature of the urban renewal commission. And should we choose not to do so, invite the Park Place Neighborhood Association to bring forward another slate. Include any members that have already been put forward.
Right.
Was the only one to second that one?
I did.
Oh, you did. Oh, excuse me. You're supposed to say a second.
I'm sorry. I'm trying to decide what I'm going to do. Motion by Commissioner... I'm going to call you Commissioner, because you're not... Motion by Neely, second, and by Mum. Call for the vote.
Commissioner Mum?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Abstained.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
And Mayor Neely?
Yes. Another motion.
Well...
Thank you.
I had a problem with the last part. I think that all of that motion was fine, except for a recommendation to bring more names from the Park Place, which will only add to the problem again.
You want to put forward a motion?
I re...
Do you want to reconsider, and then you have to do a reconsideration, don't you? You're reconsidering the vote by which the last motion...
He put the no vote forward, didn't he? What did I vote?
He voted yes.
Alan said...
We don't...
Kathy abstained.
Well, Kathy abstained. Do you want to put forward a motion, Kathy?
I move that we declare the seat vacant and put off discussion of this matter until after we've had our discussion at goal-setting or work session, whichever is first.
Second.
You can't second.
I can second. That was determined in a big reading when I wasn't here by Bill Combs. I was listening on my telephone for 15 minutes of dead silence.
Oh, yeah, I remember that. That's right. You're right.
Question for Kathy. You're going to put forth the motion that we leave the seat vacant, and then we discuss it as to what to do.
Right.
Is that what you're saying?
Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Mum?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
And Mayor Neely?
Aye.
How's that?
With that, we're going on to our general business. See potential topics, a list survey for Metro Policy Advisory Committee. This is something that I brought forward. It's really an information piece, but I invite you to make any comments on it. These were items that are being recommended to be brought forward to the Metro Policy Advisory Committee, which I'm the representative of, and Commissioner Roth is the alternate. And we got passed out this survey, and I did not receive it until after our last commission meeting. We have a couple of staff that are rather familiar with issues that come up, and then also, Mr. Underwood has joined the staff. I asked them to go ahead and do these surveys. I did the survey as well, after I looked at their particular comments. And if you go ahead and look at the responses, I can talk about what was done. The request was for all of the members of the Metro Policy Advisory Committee fill out this particular survey, most of the city, and turned it in at the last IMPACT meeting. Most of the cities had done so. I had made out one, but I asked permission essentially to wait until our commission could go ahead and look at it, and since most of the cities hadn't submitted, that was an issue. I did submit one, but I told them that they should regard it as a rough draft, which they said they would. And so what you have here under IMPACT survey, if you take a look at that particular topic, and I don't know, probably the easy... Well, these are the topics that are being put forward, and they're ranked one through five, one of highest importance, the method in which it's put forward to IMPACT, and it's a listing of the topics that are there. My request is that I can resubmit recommendations later, and for you all to take a look at what those particular topics are. You may need some information on some of those. And to look at what my responses are, and also look at what the staff members' comments are. I might point out that Tony Conical serves as our representative to... I almost say T-PAC. IMPAC. Metro Technical Advisory Committee, and they are the advisory committee to Metro... To the Metro Advisory Committee. They provide technical recommendations. Nancy Crushhour is a member of T-PAC. And you can see, we've got all these acronyms. And that's the Technical Policy Advisory Committee.
Alternatives Committee.
Okay. An alternatives committee. And actually, you're not appointed by me, are you?
No.
So her appointment is actually a different organization. Tony's appointment is by me, but her appointment is from a different organization. And that's one of the reasons I wanted them to do the survey. And the city manager also felt that'd be a very good idea for our economic development manager to also partake in the survey. And so I don't... I guess what I'm asking, if you have any input on these topics that you think have higher importance than either the staff or myself put on it. One major difference that I had with the staff was I gave a higher rating to affordable housing than they did. And that's one of the... I think there was another difference, too, but that's the one that I recall. I don't know that you have to take any time with it now, but I would appreciate input from you.
Okay. That's great.
Is that okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. And then we're going on to the consent agenda. I don't think anything was pulled.
Special proof.
Second.
I.
Commissioner Mum?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
I was going to say something, but I get...
No.
Commissioner Comment Time, report.
City manager report.
I will not say anything.
We're going on seven hours.
I know.
Make it short. First of all, I wanted to remind the commission that you have your goal-setting this Saturday.
Yeah.
And our slogan is "Get it Done in One," and we're still hoping to. You do have a pretty full agenda, and I know you'll get that. Nancy, did we send that out today? Or was it...
It's online, but you'll get your hard copy tomorrow.
You'll get your hard copy. And there's a little paragraph this year. We decided to add a paragraph under each thing, and some of the paragraphs are very short, because we want to really stimulate the discussion, but we tried to put...
What time do we have to wake up?
Tiny bit of background information in there.
Breakfast is at eight.
Okay, I can do that.
And it's a real breakfast, it's not just the continental one, so...
That should help.
Hail.
Thank you.
Unless you want to move it to next to the sandpit, then you can start at seven. I think that's what they said. Also, we're coming up on the one-year... One of the commission's goals is increased communication, and I think that's not just between the staff and our citizenry, but also it's between staff and the commission. And you'll recall about a year ago, we're just a few days away from the one-year anniversary of Friday Highlights, which you get from us every Friday, unless we send them out Thursday.
Yeah.
And I just wanted to check in with you and see how that's been going.
I like it.
That's great.
Is it too much, too little, about right? Keep it up? It's all good?
I save them all.
I like the bullet point.
Yeah. It is a fairly short snapshot, in a good way, I think, for you guys to keep informed. But I haven't heard any good feedback or bad feedback.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Any feedback in general. So I wanted to check in.
No, that's where they were sometimes.
And we'll keep it coming, about like it is. And if you have suggestions along the way, we're always open to changing things.
No bad news is good news, Mr. Sullivan.
Yeah.
Well, I learned a long time ago not to assume the commission liked what you were doing, just because they didn't talk to you about it. So I'm bringing it to you.
Well, that's our responsibility on the communications side.
Yes, yes.
We'll let you know.
Let's see, there's also... I want to clarify, I talked to the chief tonight, or this afternoon, because he was going to be here for this on the blue sky issue. And I just want to reiterate to the commission, in my view, he's done his job by warning you about something he views as a public safety issue.
Right.
I've done my job by giving Ed the instruction to develop a tool. The tool may actually be different. It may be tweaked and amended and whatever. But on a personal note and a professional note, this is a values decision. I do not care, one way or the other, whether you adopt something to better deal with this, or whether you take your chances. You know, we did that before. I just don't want to be in a position of the commission basically saying, you know, we're really anxious about having one of these, and we'd like some tools. And I don't want to be the guy who didn't give you any tools. I've been in that position in cities before, when people bring a business... In Grants Pass, they brought a strip club to town, bought a major building in the center of town. And the next day, my phone rang off the wall from bankers, lawyers, all the pillars of the community, my commission members. Yikes, what do we do? It was a very public thing. The guy was in the Christmas parade with strippers on a float, okay? It was pretty obvious that this was going to happen. And the commission said, why don't we have tools? And I said, well, your code says this. And there was some legal wrangling. We ended up in a lawsuit, twenty-some different claims filed in federal court, all eventually dismissed. But it was a lot of litigation that probably didn't have to happen. The strip club ultimately did not open. Well, it was open for a few days. But, you know, it was a big controversy, and for nothing. And so I wanted to err on the side this time as saying, and again, that strip club in Grants Pass might not have been acceptable under their community values. In Las Vegas, they might have said, well, can we have three more?
Right.
And who's to say what's right or wrong? The values decision has to come from the commission, not me. I'm not making any recommendation, one way or the other, whether you have it or you don't have it. I really... It doesn't matter to me. That's your decision, and we'll just try to make it implement whatever you decide. But despite proclamations from people who think they can read my mind, I have enough trouble doing that myself, I do not have an opinion about whether you should do this or not do it.
I'd like somebody to...
And the chief also wanted me to mention that he's okay either way, too. You know, we work with whatever comes out of it, so...
Okay.
And other than that, I'll see you Saturday. Commission, staff, do you have anything? Any staff members?
I was supposed to give an update on the Willamette Valley.
All right.
So we're continuing to have some staff discussions and with the mayor about the Willamette Valley Resilience Compact. And I think we're at the point where it'd be best to bring it to a work session. So I'm also going to have our city attorney review it, just to, you know, give us perspective if there's any things that we should be careful about in it. So unless the work session gets too full for February, I'm proposing that we discuss it at that. And we'll come prepared with a organized PowerPoint. Sometimes it's hard to get through these pages, reading it, because it's... I'm going to try to put it into something that makes it easy to understand.
That's good. I appreciate that. Nancy had John Lewis come and drag me out of the house and force me to go down to Salem to this resiliency meeting, which was fine, I was learning a great deal. Then I found out I was supposed to be in a table of speakers as well.
Now, we sent you an email, Mayor.
Well, I know that, but anyway, I think it'd be great to have that. And I've got some announcements. Reappointing Chris Geiger and William Gifford to the Budget Committee. The term of Chris Geiger will be to January 1st, 2012, and... Oh, I guess it's the terms for them both, yeah, from until December 31st, 2014. Those are three-year appointments. And I also made the appointment of Robert Seaworth to the Urban Renewal Budget Committee, term ending December 31st, 2014, as well. We've got still some vacancies to fill. We've got one vacancy on the Planning Commission, two on the Transportation Advisory Commission, and one on the Urban Renewal Budget Committee. And so we'll try to get those filled. If any of you know anybody to fill those positions, let me know. You have gotten an email from me in which I asked staff to put together... Because the staff have worked on various... With various advisory... Our advisory boards to recommend people to actually extend the invitation to submit... People to apply for our city commission seat. I copied you that particular email. I understand that today I've gotten the list by email. I'll be going ahead and sending emails to these individuals, and I'll copy you all, so you'll know who those people are. I suggested that, you know, if we knew good people that we thought could contribute to our healing process, be sure to invite them.
Yeah.
And I thought, from my standpoint, the best way was to find people who have demonstrated that in city advisory boards and so forth.
Absolutely.
So when I start sending those emails and embodying them, I'll copy you all.
Thank you.
Just a real quick update on the Planning Commission vacancy. That application process closed on the 17th of this month, so we should be bringing forward some applications for that.
Okay, very good. You've had applications, then?
Yes, we did. We extended the submittal time till January 17th.
How many applications, may I ask?
Was it four or five?
Four, yeah.
Oh, good. Oh, great.
Good.
I would be a city commissioner.
You can ask.
If you want me to forward them.
Very good. Thank you.
I have one comment.
Yes, go right ahead.
Just so everybody knows, our mayor has now been put in the chairman of South Fork Water Board. So he was appointed at our last meeting because he was absent.
That's not quite true.
That's not quite true.
I came in 10 minutes late, and really, the decision was essentially made without having taken a vote. I had looked at the website of South Fork before I went to this meeting, and I found out there were problems with the website. They hadn't posted several of the more recent meetings. But secondly, they had me as vice chair on the website, and it was actually Commissioner Smith that was the vice chair. And so I figured the vice chair would automatically become chair next time around, so I was expecting to nominate. to nominate Rocky Smith to be the chair.
Good thing I was there first. And you also said, though, that if you were chair, you'd be at the meeting on time, so there you go.
There you go. There you go.
Well, I said that that'll teach me not to be here.
But you also will be on time, more if you're happy to run the meeting.
That's true. Well, that's what the vice chair is for. Anyway, thank you. We're closed.
Yay.
We're going into executive session.
Oh, no.
You have to read the ordinance. Do I have the ordinance?
I forgot about that.
Oh, yeah, I forgot.
I don't think it involves you.
That's a little peculiar.
Pursuant to orders, 1926602E to conduct deliberations with persons designated by governing body to negotiate real property transaction.
Okay.